August 22nd meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Mallow.
Counselor Souza.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is absent at this time.
Consent agenda approval of regular council meeting meetings July 11th, 2016. Recite of minutes from the following boards of commission. Haver and Coastal Water Management Cemetery. Correspondence received and filed. Tiverton Parents' Teachers Annual Year End Report by Teresa Joy, Program Coordinator. Approval of Tax Assessors Abolements. Narragansett Bay Whelmen, Providence, Rhode Island. Request Permission to Hold Annual Bike Ride on Sunday, September 11th. Police Chief Recommendation. Mark Russo Administrative Officer Activities Report for July of 2016. Denise Charette Treasury Report Budget and Revenue Reports for July 2016. Rideout Letter Regarding Funding and Timing Associated with Old Stone Bridge Above My Project. Any of the councils like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, C.A. 7.
Anyone else? I like a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? C.A. 7 Denise Charette Treasury Budget and Revenue Reports for July 2016.
Is Ms. Charette here tonight?
I don't believe so.
I'd just like to find out, Matt, when the final is going to be. A final.
The final.
Final, final.
Denise and I haven't discussed it, but it should be within a couple of weeks. I know that I was helping her clear up a couple of paper entries, accounting entries this week, sign-offs. But I think we're pretty much done. I'm not aware of anything else that's still pending.
It seems like each year we get later and later with this. It's middle of September, maybe? End of September? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept C.A. 7.
Oh, it's almost. Second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Open forum. Wherever you want, Susan. Just state your name and address before beginning.
Okay. I am going to read an excerpt.
Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Well, I am here as part of the, as the Chair of the Historical Preservation Advisory Board. So I am going to read an excerpt from the will of Lydia B. Essex that is dated December 28th, 1935, and she passed the following year. And this is regarding her real estate of 300 rods of land with a cottage on Highland Road.
When was that dated? I'm sorry.
It was, the will was dated December 28th, 1935.
Thank you.
Upon the death of her sister Estelle W. Essex, this is quote from her will. "I give, devise, and bequeath said rest and residue, including all my right, title, and interest in the real estate on Highland Road in the town of Tiverton in the state of Rhode Island to the town of Tiverton for the erection and equipment thereon of a library building as a memorial to my mother Lydia Smith Baker Essex, and the building to be so marked or identified. It is my wish that a library building may be constructed of stone similar in design to Russell Library in the town of Acushnet, Massachusetts. If at the time of my decease the personal property in my estate shall be insufficient to erect and equip a library building as above, then it is my wish and desire that the same may be allowed to accumulate until such time as said personal property with its accumulation shall be sufficient to erect and equip a library building as aforesaid, and any balance shall be used for the maintenance of said library. This gift or devise to the town of Tiverton is made upon the condition that the said town of Tiverton shall accept the gift within one year after the decease of my said sister Estelle W. Essex or within one year after my decease if my sister shall pre-decease me. But said town of Tiverton may elect to accept only the real estate without the personal property for a library, in which event said real estate to be used for some public purpose other than the erection or maintenance thereon of a police station or fire engine house." Now approximately $42,000 was left to the town with the two-acre lot of land upon her death, and this was accepted at a town meeting in 1937. Income from her request was being used to purchase books up to 1976, according to the Tiverton Historical Society's publication, A Patchwork History. Now I don't know if any of her money is still being used today, and the basis for the collection of the books originally came from the Wittridge Hall Library. So needless to say, Essex Public Library is an historic building on land willed to the town for a public library with stipulations on its appearance and use for a public purpose. It should not be sold to a private entity, as this was not the desire of the property owner who gave it to the town in her will. She specifically stipulated that it should be used for the community, and I think this would be legally binding, although I'm not a lawyer. It was clear to me in this excerpt of her will that this was her wish and desire. So speaking as Chair of the Historical Preservation Advisory Board, I ask the Town Council that whatever they decide to do with this building, that the exterior be maintained as is with the fieldstone sides, the slate roof, and the copper trim. This deed stipulation of maintaining these historic exterior materials is similar to that that was given by the Central Baptist Church Committee when they sold that property. Preserving the historic materials of our town's historical buildings is in keeping with maintaining the town's historic character related in the Comprehensive Community Plan." And I have copies of the.
Just hand them over to Nancy and she'll distribute them. Thank you. He said we can start. Did you say, you didn't say?
No, I didn't know Susan was going to speak about it. I'm the Secretary of the Historic Advisory Board, and there was no, we did not talk about it, I don't know, because Susan made it as though we talked about it, and it was our idea, we did not.
Okay.
It was not part of the, in any part of our discussion that, I think it's a good idea to maintain the exterior and all of that, but it's, the group did not vote on anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Pelletier.
And I think that was important for the record as the Tiverton Historic Advisory Board.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Angelini. I'm the Vice President of the Tiverton Historical Society. Our Board of Directors has met and discussed the Essex Library since we've read in the papers, especially the Newport Daily, of the sale, of the potential sale of the Essex Library. We have considerable experience in historic properties and also with restoration. In general, we noticed in the paper, and we know in the town, one of the major concerns is the public paying of the utilities to upkeep and present that building. We also know that the Town Administrators' Court is saying that the properties of a significant building in a significant neighborhood in this town. We are actually in Tiverton Heights, as everybody knows, which is historically the area where we're actually in. If John Hancock and Polverville were here today, they'd be casting their shadows on us right now because they were up on that hill with Lieutenant Colonel Barton. We at the Tiverton Historical Society have worked with many other towns in regards to how they operate things, and one of the things that many towns do is they have excess public properties, and when they do that, they offer, they potentially offer through a lease agreement to use for community service and outreach, these public properties to community groups that help benefit the community. As you know, the Tiverton Historical Society is an ambassador to the town. We present and promote the history of this town, its people, and its buildings. The Essex Library is an interesting asset. Our potential vision that we have discussed, Curly at Four Corners with the Chase Quarry House, our potential, for consideration and potential proposal with the Councilman of Tiverton, is that the Essex Library becomes the Essex Visitor Center of Tiverton Heights, and we use that as a revolutionary war introduction, because this town and neighborhood, this is where Fort Barton is, we can use that as a museum and an outreach to do walking tours, tours of Barton, and it's also a quick walk down Lawton Avenue to go down to see where Lieutenant Colonel William Barton and his forty men left in 1777 to capture General Prescott on Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Not only that, the major invasion force, which included Paul Revere and everybody else, left from Hollins Ferry, which is basically the same site that Barton left from. So what Tiverton Historical Society would like to do, or at least what we're mentioning here as a potential, we would like to work with the town and discuss the potential that the Tiverton Historical Society enters a lease agreement potentially in which we would pay all maintenance, general upkeep, and utility fees for the building, like almost every town Historical Society does for schools and other buildings. Little town Massachusetts actually just did this, and we would work together to promote and, well, it's actually a win-win situation. The town maintains an historic building, they maintain the original agreement with the Essex family, even though they may have passed, they maintain the actual agreement that is used for a public purpose. We could also use it as a reference library for revolutionary war documents that we maintain. And to be completely honest with you, working with the Tiverton Public Library, even though we're paying the bills, you know, we might be able to allow the Tiverton Library access to that building as well to house their revolutionary war documents. There's only three major towns in Rhode Island that can present their revolutionary war history. Newport, which was occupied by the British, Tiverton, and Portsmouth. Portsmouth has the battlefield, but everybody left here. They spent a lot more time in Tiverton than they did in Portsmouth. You know, tourism is an interesting thing. Every community wants to develop their waterfront. Every community is looking for that niche to make us different. Tiverton has the American Revolution, and some of the prime characters of the American Revolution and the American side came from here, came through here. They came to Tiverton Heights. This is where major invasions were launched. You know, the largest battle and the largest congregation of men during the American Revolution in New England was launched from Tiverton, Rhode Island. And I think it's beneficial to this community and also to the history of Rhode Island to present that, and maybe we could use the Essex Library to help do that. It would give us a reach in the, it would give the town an historic reach, not only in Four Corners, where we have that Chase Quarry, but also at Tiverton Heights, which is an excellent opportunity. So I just wanted to mention that for consideration, and the Tiverton Historical Society would be interested in potentially tearing the building, see its condition, and potentially looking to an agreement with the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island for community purposes to extend education and preservation in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Jones Essex Library.
Yeah, I just want to ducktail on what.
Name and address.
Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road.
Thank you.
I had this whole speech, but actually the previous speakers did a much better job than I did, and I just wanted to say that people that have lived in this area, Essex Library Building is a Tiverton landmark, and how many people in town, since it was built in 1939, have enjoyed the beautiful view from its steps to the gazebo to the bay. I just want to remind people that the gazebo is actually, has been rebuilt and was maintained by a bunch of Stonebridge neighbors who would be more than happy to do the same for the Essex Library. We do it on a yearly basis, and we do that all the time. And until this gentleman had come up, I had wanted to present an alternative, and the alternative was a citizen committee working with the Historic Commission could work on placing the building on the National Register of Historic Places. This would make the town, the building eligible for grants to correct and maintain any structural concerns. The town would have time, and then we would have time to, you know, review its own needs in case that building was something to be considered for the town, for the town. And more importantly, in keeping the Essex Library as a public building, it would honor the gift that was so generously presented to the people of Tiverton so many years ago, and let the people considering donations of land, we don't want to set a precedent, we want to honor our gifts. So, you know, we want to make sure that people know that when they make a presentation or a gift to the town of Tiverton, that we will honor it, and we accept it, and we appreciate it. This is not about politics, and I just want everybody to know that we really feel that this is an important landmark building for the town.
Thank you, Renee. We are on the agenda. Okay, thank you, that's it for open forum. Open public forum presentation, I'm sorry, presentations. Jennifer Regan, State Board of Elections, Presentation on New Election Equipment. It's Jennifer.
Madam President, Jennifer is in here, obviously. This is Rob Rock, the Secretary of State.
I am not Jennifer Regan, but, Madam President, thank you very much, members of the Tiverton Town Council, Tiverton residents. My name is Rob Rock, I'm the Director of Elections for Secretary of State Nellie Gorbaya, and I first want to thank you for allowing me to come and take just a few minutes quickly to demonstrate the state's new voting equipment, which is behind me to my left, and believe it or not, while it looks a lot different, the process for voting hasn't really changed much, so I want to make sure I make that clear. But I also want to especially thank the Clerk's Office, Nancy and Leona, Kathleen, Jeannie and Lori for inviting us down and kind of putting this together. As you're well aware, we have purchased new voting equipment for the state, we purchased it in the spring, and one of the things that we want to do is we want to get out to the public as much as we possibly can to bring the new machines out so people can see what they're going to be voting on this September and November, and then going forward. We've been all over the state, and we're going to continue to do so through the election, and again, this is, we appreciate you allowing us to come here tonight. I just quickly want to talk about a few things about the new machines before I quickly demonstrate it, and the first thing I want to mention is that we are still going to be voting on paper ballots. So there's, I know there's a lot of talk around the country about electronic voting machines and things like that. We are still voting on paper ballots. So as you, as I'll show in a second, you'll slide your ballot into the machine, it's going to fall right into that bin and is available for recounts and audits. There's a paper trail so that there's no concern about the security of the election. That's first and foremost. It's in our state law, and I know Secretary Gorbaya feels very strongly about having a paper ballot, so we made sure we purchased equipment that has a paper ballot. One of the, one of the good things, I think, about the new equipment is that many of you remember voting since 1997, in order to cast a ballot, you connect the head and tail of an arrow. And I think it's safe to say that the only place where you connect the head and tail of an arrow is at the voting booth, which I think can be confusing for people who see it once every two years or once every four years. So the new ballots are going to be, you're filling in an oval next to the candidate or question of your choice, and I think all of us are more familiar with voting in oval than we are voting the head and tail of an arrow, whether it's a medical form or a survey. I think we're more in tune to voting a, using an oval as opposed to head and tail of an arrow, so that's one of the things we're improving on. We also, for those that vote by mail, in the past, you've gotten instructions from our office to vote using a pencil, because ink wasn't very readable using the old machines. If it bled through to the back of the ballot, or if it was a colored ink, there'd be a problem with the ballot. Well, this new technology allows us to use pens, which again is more secure, so we're not asking people to vote by mail using a pencil. So people are going to be using a pen, and we're going to be able to use any ballpoint pen, black or blue, as opposed to using the markers that you used in the past at the voting booth, which are more expensive, they're tougher to find, but now you can use simple blue and black ballpoint pens. So that's another, another good thing about, about the machines. So if I may, I'm just going to cast two ballots tonight, you know, in front of you. I'm going to cast one quote-unquote "good ballot," and this is a ballot that I filled out correctly, where I voted for the exact number of candidates that I'm supposed to. I'm just going to show you how it works when it goes into the machine. You're not going to be awed, because again, it's going to be the same process as you've done in the past, where you slide it in and it's, it's accepted. But the second ballot I'm going to vote is a ballot that is not a good ballot, and what I mean by that is, I voted for more candidates than I'm allowed to. So this race here, it's a demo ballot, I'm voting for my favorite car choice, and I can only choose one, however, in this case, I chose BMW and Mercedes, because I want you all to see what happens if you do overvote a ballot by mistake. Now if you remember in the past, when you slid your ballot in, if you overvoted a ballot, it would automatically kick out, and it would sit there, hanging out of the machine, and if somebody cast their ballot and walked away without realizing it, their ballot would be sitting there for people to see who they voted for. This new machine, instead of it kicking back out automatically, it's going to stay inside the machine, and it's going to notify the voter that they've overvoted, and the voter will have a choice to make. Do you want your ballot back to get a new ballot and vote, or do you just want to forget it and cast your ballot anyway? So again, more secure, your votes are more secret, and so I just want to do those two things, Madam President, if I may. So the first ballot I'm going to put through is, again, a good ballot. I voted for all the candidates I was supposed to, no more, no less, and so forth. You simply slide it into the machine, just like you always have, and it goes in. If the AC wasn't on, you could probably hear it falling into the bin. It says, "Congratulations, you voted," and you're going to go on your way. And the best part of the day is you'll get your "I voted" sticker, you wear it proudly and you go on. So that's the best part, I think, getting the "I voted."
You can still get your sticker.
You still get your sticker. So this ballot, the second ballot, as I mentioned, is one in which I voted for two candidates when I was only supposed to vote for one. So as I slide it in the machine, it's going to, it's going to tell me on the screen that I've overvoted, and again, it's very difficult to see where you're voting, where you're sitting, but the ballot stays inside the machine. It gives me two options. Do I want to return my ballot and vote again, go to the poll worker and get another ballot, or I could simply cast it. I'm not going to be worried about voting again, and I just want to move on with my day. So I'm going to hit return, and the ballot is going to come back out to me, and I'm going to take this ballot, and I'm going to go see it, and it'd be saying that my vote wasn't counted. I'm going to go to a poll worker, and I'm going to say, "Listen, I made a mistake, could I have a new ballot?" And they'll go back to the voting booth, and they'll cast their ballot as they, as they wish, and then put the ballot through the machine. So again, not a huge difference in the process, you slide your ballot in, no difference there. It does look a little bit different, we've got the screen now with the interface, which is again a little bit different, but it's much better than the equipment we've been using. This is going to be the first time since 1998 that we're going to see new voting equipment, which is, you know, close to 20 years, and some of my counterparts across the country are concerned because they're using equipment that's slightly over 10 years old. So we really needed new equipment, and we're really excited about, about this. Again, I thank you to the council and to the residents for, for listening. We find this to be very important, and again, thank you so very much for your time, we appreciate it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Anyone have any questions?
Rob, will you just explain that you still have the ability to write in and.
Absolutely.
And that the, the new machine will just scan them all.
That's correct, yes. So you still have the ability to write in. Write-in's a very popular option for people, there's going to be a write-in option for every race on the ballot, not in the primary, but in November, and that process is still the same, where you write in your, your votes, and you, they'll be counted just like they have been in the past at the city and town level.
How quickly are you going to get these results now? Isn't that one of the benefits of that?
Yeah, so the results are going to be done one of two ways. You can actually send the results right from the polling place to the State Board of Elections, which means as soon as the poll closes, the results can be sent. Or they can be sent the way they've always been sent in the past, where the PAC in years past, this year it's going to be a USB port, comes back to Town Hall, and Town Hall will send the results to the Board of Elections. So it's a belt and suspenders way of doing things, you can get them very quick by sending them directly from the poll to the Board of Elections, and we also have the backup where it can be brought back to Town Hall like it always has been, and the results can be sent right here from Town Hall.
Is that it, Nancy? Jeffrey?
Rob.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we didn't hear you, but does it count the undervote too, or just overvote?
Just overvote, because, with the exception of a blank ballot. So if a blank ballot goes into the machine, and believe it or not, people want to cast a blank ballot, it will notify the voter. But an undervote, it will not notify the voter because they have every right to not vote in a race, or if it's a vote for seven, they could only vote for one if they wanted to. So they're not notified because we only want to notify if there's a problem. And technically, that's not a problem that they've, that they've undervoted, because they just decided that they don't, they don't want to vote in that race.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
What happens to the wrong ballots? What does it return to the people on the side saying, "I want a new ballot"? What are they doing here?
So what they'll do is they'll ask the voter to fill in multiple ovals so that their votes are kept confidential, and they will put them in an envelope, in a voided ballot envelope, and those ballots will come back to the Town Hall. But, but instead of just placing the bad ballot, as I call it, into an envelope, they, again, I want to stress, they do ask the voter to continue to fill out the ballot so that if someone were to look at that voided ballot, they wouldn't be able to tell how that person voted.
Okay, all right.
Because let's say if only one person voided a ballot, technically speaking, you know, the person, any poll worker would know that their ballot's inside that envelope, so we want them to fill it out so that nobody will know how they voted, even though it was a ballot that wasn't read by the machine.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Advertise Public Hearings. Town Administrator, Public Hearing Continued from August 9th. Approval of Proposed Amendments to Fees and Fines. Resolution Regarding Building Inspector Fees. Is the Building Inspector here today?
No, he's not.
And that's, that's why we continued it.
Yeah, no.
All right.
At 3:30 this afternoon, I was handed the analysis that compares these two sample buildings from Tiverton to Middletown. I have questions of my own. I'm trying to replicate the math, and I can't. So I'd like to do that before I present it to you or put it in public record. I will say that my first impression is that on the commercial application, we were about 10% higher than Middletown, all in. So for building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we were about 10% higher when it was all added up. The building permit itself, just for the building construction, was less expensive in Tiverton. So where our up charges were, it was on the specialty inspections. So let me.
So are you suggesting as we continue it until September 12th?
I'm suggesting asking, requesting.
I'll move that.
Well, okay, go ahead for discussion.
Do I have a second to just.
I'll second it for discussion.
Go ahead.
Madam President, I don't know if there's any way of bringing back something that we voted on already for fines. After speaking to our town clerk, she wasn't here for her presentation, and.
We'll have to re-advertise for it though.
Well, if we continue this, we still have to re-advertise for it?
We'd have to re-advertise the subject because no one would know that we're discussing it.
Okay. So we'll have to re-advertise.
And you'll remember what that is? Okay. So I have a motion to continue this subject until the September 12th meeting. Any further discussion?
Someone.
All those in favor?
It was all set.
Town Council Sitting as a Board of Licensing. Ronald Falcon DBA Route 177 Flea Market, 1560 Bogomash Road, requesting transfer of license. Flea Market and Holiday, subject to conditions on prior license. Welcome.
My name is Ronald Falcon, I'm here behalf of the Flea Market, Tiverton Flea Market, 1560 Bogomash Road.
And all you're asking for is a transfer of the license, because it's a new owner now.
Correct. Same restrictions.
Any questions from the council?
Just, I want to make sure we are all on the same page with what those restrictions are. Is this working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am.
Do we have the restrictions?
They should give a copy of the license register packet with list of restrictions on what's restricted to the parking lot only, no children, civic users.
I, I have to say that I recommended, rather than a new license being issued to these business owners, that the existing license be transferred to that very reason. So not only what you have here in your packet, but because this is the same license, all of those same things that have gone on with this particular business, including their current matter pending before the Tiverton Building Board of Review carries on with this license. So that's why I recommend that this license be transferred rather than a new license created and issued. And I, we've explained that, and the applicants here tonight are familiar with that and agree.
Okay. So presumably you'll be back once all the improvements.
Once all the conditions are met, yes.
And I like to say I go by there all the time, and I'm noticing significant improvements, and you're doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
I tend to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to transfer a license to Ronald Falcon DBA Route 177 Flea Market.
Further discussion?
I'd like to say a couple of things on this. I've been following this relatively closely. They've done a fantastic job up at that flea market. I was in there Sunday during the tour of the buildings that they're not going to use right now, but they're fixing them all up. I actually have pictures of them, and I'll show them to you later on if you'd like to see them, but they're, they're doing a fantastic job up there, and hopefully we can continue and keep that flea market going.
Any other discussion, Brett?
Yeah, I just, the, the language on the license restriction is kind of clunky, maybe we could clean that up a little bit. Thanks.
We've actually, they hired an architect this morning, so. We've actually, they hired an architect this morning, so things are moving along.
Any other discussion?
Madam President, just unfortunately, I will, when you come in to pick up your license, you will have to pay for the license. Even though it's a transfer, they will have to pay that.
Alright, any other...
Just for the transfer and then for the license? Is that what you're saying?
No, just for the transfer. If you paid it...
Oh, we paid that, yes.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor.
All set? Thank you.
Good luck.
Nice job. Sally will be very happy.
Yeah.
She will.
Sally's there more than Dave.
Sally's there with Dave.
Unfinished business, Councilor Joan Chabert, a member to the town council governance policy, continued from August 9th.
We have taken the feedback and presented it to town council. We'll read what it now says that is recommended to add under item four, meeting agenda, add section D, executive session. The order of the agenda on all regular and special meetings of the town council shall be such that any executive sessions shall be final items on the agenda. In the event that special counsel charging an hourly fee for such presence is expected at any town council meeting, the town council shall break at 10:00 p.m. to conduct only the executive session business pertinent to the aforementioned council. In this event, the posted agenda will explicitly indicate the necessity of such an event and the public will be verbally noticed at the beginning of the meeting that such a break will occur. If a special meeting is scheduled exclusively for an executive session prior to a regular meeting, at the appointed time for the regular meeting, the special meeting must be promptly ended or be continued after the regular meeting has concluded. Any other suggestions?
Any discussion?
Yeah, well, I'd like to discuss it a bit. And now, I've raised this issue in the past. And I'll quote from the, what I wrote down. And my concern is that the proposal applies only to quote-unquote "special counsel retained by the town." It would not cover counsel for applicants or other professionals such as engineers and architects charging fees either to the town or to an applicant. It doesn't answer the concern that these other professionals are incurring fees and costs that could amount to hundreds of dollars in a given night. My only, my other concern is, and hopefully this doesn't come to pass, but my other concern is that if we underestimate the time that we will have with the professionals in the executive session, we would then have to continue the matter until 10 o'clock. That means that in any, if we don't complete our executive session with the professionals, even with special counsel, at 7:00 we have to begin the open session. We don't get back until, to the executive session until 10:00. So we've almost worked into this proposal, three hours of billable time for special counsel. Those are my two objections. The other thing is, Joan has indicated that this was an effort to include the feedback. This problem originally came up four or five years ago. And the problem that we had, the issue that we had at that time were complaints by people and even letters to the editor and even editorial by one newspaper complaining about the fact that we had these experts sitting in chambers for two or three or four hours before we took them, running up substantial bills, not only for the town, but for the people who were appearing as applicants. I would like to see that whole issue addressed.
So how would you like to change it?
Well, actually, I've twice submitted the proposed language and I don't have the proposed, I gave up. I don't have the proposed language anymore. But I wanted to include all counsel, all professionals who are here either representing the town or representing an applicant who is here on business with the town to go into executive session.
Jeff, this language, I'll just speak to it 'cause I wrote it. This language in the second paragraph provides that. It doesn't specifically say legal counsel. I left it as counsel, period, so that it would be encompassing for all service professionals that were providing a service or counsel to the town or to any, it doesn't specifically say being paid for by the town or anyone else.
But what, it starts off, and maybe I'm misreading with you, I'm overly reading it as a lawyer, but it says, "In the event that special counsel charging an hourly fee for such presence is expected at any town council meeting, blah, blah, blah." I would take that to mean that it's limited to special counsel.
It is. But not special legal counsel.
It's any counsel.
No, it's, we use the term special counsel as a term of heart. I hate to say it, Tony, you are not special counsel.
That's correct.
Okay. Special counsel comes in, is a situation in which we hire a lawyer who supposedly has special expertise in some particular area of the law, whether it's the schools or whatever the project may be.
So if...
I don't see any reason to limit it to special counsel for the town, but I would also include all professionals who are sitting there for two or three or four hours and building up a fee for an applicant.
That's what it was intended. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so that is not a term that is universal to lawyers in my profession. It refers to engineers, planners, architects, lawyers, just about anybody. But Tony just whispered in my ear that we replace special counsel with any professional and that would serve to...
And I'm sorry Brett, I didn't understand what you intended.
No, that's fine.
I was giving a literal meaning to the word special counsel and that's how I would interpret it.
Explain the third paragraph to me Brett.
I didn't write that.
If a special meeting is scheduled...
I can explain it, but I don't know if it'll be right.
Joan, did you?
Just that if you, there are towns that call an executive session just before the regular council meeting. They schedule it at like 6:30 'cause they want a quick hit, they have one issue, they wanna get through and done with. I'm just putting in a caveat here that says, "If you're not done, you gotta stop."
So, so if you were to...
'Cause we know how long those go.
So if you were to schedule this executive session, you'd have to put a timeline at 6:30 to 7:30 with reference session beginning at 7:30. Okay, I understand.
Actually, some towns actually post it as a separate meeting.
And Joan, that's my concern. If we schedule it for 6:30 to 7:00 and we have to begin the public session at 7:00 and we say, "Gee, we haven't finished this discussion with special counsel for whoever the expert is, come back at 10:00." Isn't that essentially what we would have to do?
Exclusive for the executive session prior to the regular meeting.
I would think that we would have no one to blame but ourselves in that instance 'cause we ought to know these things in advance. And if we're going to try and shoehorn an hour's worth of discussion into 30 minutes, I suppose then shame on us.
You couldn't do that with this.
I think what it's designed to do is make, have an expectation that those items will be dealt with in, if necessary, at 10:00. And I think, I'm not even certain this third paragraph provides for bringing those individuals in, but rather conducting general executive session. 'Cause there's no reference, 'cause we've already carved out the provision that we put our per hour, charging per hour of professionals, special professionals at 10:00, so they shouldn't be at 6:30.
Well, that's, so what subject would be there?
I suppose the normal executive session stuff, if you want.
That's what the second paragraph is supposed to stop us from doing.
No, it's supposed to stop us from taking the, it's supposed to stop us from putting special counsel or special professional assistants at the beginning.
Right.
So that we would have to punt it to the end if we had this third paragraph in there. Or leave, you know, leave us for an hour, or leave people for an hour outside without anything to do.
And Brett, I don't really have a great concern with that last section.
Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion? And I hate to give you, could Tony sort of redraft it to make sure that some lawyer-like person doesn't misinterpret what we're trying to do here?
Have you read this?
Make sure we have the legalese language.
Do you have a problem with that?
From a legal standpoint, the third paragraph, no.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's simply a practical issue.
Yes.
We should try to make an appropriate estimate as to how long the executive session is gonna last. I understand, that's not a legal issue. Make sure though that, I'd like to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves to special counsel and that we're respecting the fact that applicants are also bringing in attorneys and there are other professionals as well, such as architects and engineers. I want all of them covered. If the special counsel is covered, then let's cover everybody.
No, I'd suggest that special counsel be changed to any professional.
Okay.
And I think that would cover it because charging an hourly fee for such presence...
It'd be anyone who's paying.
And do you think it would also cover an applicant?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay. If you're happy with that one change?
Yes.
Okay, I'll support it.
I would also change the word counsel at the end of that sentence to professional.
Hmm.
Pertinent to the aforementioned professional.
Yes.
Any other discussion from the council? Any questions?
I just have a question. Nancy, you were gonna try and put the...
I'm sorry, yes, she is retyping this.
Okay.
'Cause for some reason, we lost some part of it.
Okay.
What's the matter?
We typed it, printed it out, we have approved.
Okay, 'cause what I was, the only thing I was gonna suggest Joan is that this first paragraph, this first sentence, also be duplicated, not only just in an executive session headline, but I don't remember what the headlines are. So, 'cause that essentially pertains to the general scope of, let me just... Yeah, no, never mind, forget it.
There was an index.
That's fine there, that where it is, thanks.
Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we approve the addition of adding section D, executive session, under item four of the town council governance policy as identified in E1 and as amended from special counsel to any professional.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made and second, all those in favor? Any unanimous? Town administrator requesting direction regarding allocation of proceeds from sale of land in industrial park.
Madam President, over a year ago, at the financial town referendum, the voters approved a resolve at the ballot box to set aside no less than 25% of the proceeds of land sales in the park to the infrastructure of the park, including soft costs. And we now have booked $139,951 on the sale of land to Mr. Long under the terms of that resolve, within the timeframe of the resolve. So I'm looking for guidance from the council as to how much of that to set aside for development of the park itself. My recommendation is that we take the full sum. And my concern in making that recommendation is that we have some engineering to do. We need to understand the interplay of traffic at the end of Industrial Way with Fish Road, the northbound ramp for Route 24, as well as incidental traffic from the small development across the street, as well as our DPW and our police. Councilor Souza has been the one who's been most persistent that we look into this as we go along. And so has Deidre Piper, who was up until recently our town engineer. Those are the two voices that were raised consistently on this issue. I'd rather have a solution in place before Mr. Long has finished building this building or at least have the work in progress. I don't know how much it's gonna cost. I can't estimate. I sure as hope that it's not $378,000. But I can certainly imagine, as we go forward, having some funds allocated to infrastructure improvement and answering questions in the park without having to go to the operational budget and the operational budget process to get those questions answered is an important consideration. Therefore, my recommendation.
Any discussion from the councils?
I just had one question. We talking about going out to bed for engineering?
Yes.
For the intersection?
We'll have to go back to, out to bed. You'll have another bite at this apple, so to speak.
Where did the other $238,849 come from?
I could've predicted you were gonna ask that question, counselor. It's an excellent question. Neither Denise Saret nor I were in our current rules when that money was put into the account many, many years ago. It would appear to be excess funds from bond proceeds for the original purchase and/or leftover funds from perhaps something to do with Tiverton Power. It's not to be confused with the $90,000 that is in a surety account for the finish coat on Progress, Progress Road. That's still there and will remain there until it's needed to resurface the road after sewer expansion or other things. So you actually do have a couple of small nest eggs in place to help develop the park.
Any further questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we transfer the full sum for the sale of land in the industrial park to James Long for his indoor sports complex, be placed in the Fund 600 for engineering and other technical services required in the infrastructure of the park.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. It came to me. Matt, I'm trying, I'll eat it a little bit. Have we considered what we will do in the event that we sell the entire park for a substantial amount of money in excess of what would be needed to make any improvements that the town would be required to do?
Would we have to have him at the vote?
So to demonstrate that I understand your question, I'll try to rephrase it. What would we do with Fund 600 if it still had proceeds in it after the park is sold to any one developer?
Yes.
I think it would go to the general fund.
'Cause obviously, if you sell the entirety of the park, there's no reason to have any liability, but you would still be required to set aside at least 25% of the proceeds. But I suppose this doesn't compel us to spend them.
Right.
If we don't, okay, great, thanks.
Just before you move on, please, that could also, if there were excess funds, that could be changed in a vote of the FDR, correct?
That's right.
So it's...
Yeah, it would be either way.
That would be the best way to do it, frankly.
Yeah.
Any other...
We'd know what the number was and we could say, yeah.
Any other questions? Like to entertain, oh, we have a motion. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous. Chief Blakey, request authorization to advertise for position of police officer. You're on. You couldn't hear me.
No, I'm enjoying the air conditioning.
Alright.
Yes, regarding the advertisement. We have gone through the list. It was 178 applicants. We've gone through, exhausted that entire list. Actually put four people in academy this year and two have already dropped out. So I have officers that have expressed interest in going to another department and retiring. So I anticipate additional vacancies and I've been told by the academy they want the paperwork in the beginning of October to let us know how many seats we're going to take, so. We have time to get this done, but I wanted to get a list established.
Any questions?
Chief, do you have three in there right now?
I do not. I have two.
Two.
Two failed, of left.
Are we looking for just one or should we be looking for two or three?
Right now, I wanna... Right now, I want to establish a list, because I can't tell you who's going to be leaving the force, the department. I anticipate at least two.
So just get a... Any other questions?
Well, this is sort of tangential, chief, but have you discussed with our state delegates the situation that the state's requirement for the police academy puts the department in?
Specifically what, please?
Hmm?
Specifically what I question?
You know, it's a nightmare to get people shoehorned into the academy once every, what is it, six months?
Six months.
And it puts us at a huge disadvantage of trying to negotiate these small department funds and positions and things.
There are only three academies in the entire state.
I know.
One is the city province, one is state police. And many of the classes are taught by volunteers from other municipalities. So the labor forces from the municipalities, and they have nothing set up structured that they have full-time academy staffs. And actually, with the training requirements of 20 weeks, I don't think you could fit another class in. Unless they establish another academy and staggered it, then they just can't. That's what the criteria is. But it has been discussed.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now Donna Cook is not here, Nancy, did she say she was going to be late?
She's not going to be able to make it this evening, but she said Jeff Karen would be here to speak, may I please?
Donna Cook slash Jeff Karen requesting update regarding plan to sell the old library building. You're on, Jeff.
Meeting's going fast. Thank you, my name is Jeff Karen, from Nana Quocket Road. I have in front of me the information from the resolution that passed from the FTR, which I'll read just to refresh everyone's memory. Whereas the town of Tiverton struggles to maintain buildings and other infrastructure under public ownership despite one of the highest tax rates in the area, and whereas the taxpayers have repeatedly proven a desire for smaller budgets and tax relief, comma, be it resolved that during the 2017 fiscal year, the town council is hereby authorized and instructed to sell the building at 238 Highland Road and all related property formerly utilized as the Essex Library at fair market value. That resolution passed at the Financial Town Referendum in May. And I stand here now representing Donna, who put that in, to say... I was essentially going to ask what the process is. I know that was her intent, to move forward with that. And I first just want to comment on some of the comments we heard earlier at the beginning of the meeting during the open session. And I think everybody in this town agrees it's a beautiful building, and certainly everybody hopes it will be preserved, one way or the other, through private means or public. But I wanted to state that and give deference to the people who spoke earlier about the property. However, the voter resolution is clear, and the... I want to add to that the point that the taxpayers and the voters certainly anticipated that the building would be sold as an offset to the library bond. And there was a lot of discussion about that back in 2011. And so for a lot of voters, this was part of the calculation, that the building would be relinquished and turned into cash. So on that, I've tried to represent what Mrs. Cook submitted, as well as a position that the building should be put up for sale per the mandate of the voters, as painful as that can be with such a beautiful piece of property. Thank you.
Madam President, please.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, start off first, I think we all understand that the FTR, she went out, she got the signatures, people were well-educated when they went to the polls on this issue. It's been talked about a lot. And we're talking about a building that was donated to the town. I listened earlier, it's an historic building, it's a beautiful building. And regardless of who would take over that building, I mean, it's not like they're going to put vinyl siding on it. I mean, whoever buys that building is going to buy it, you want to restore it, you know, to its... And it needs to be restored. Let's start with the roof. It's a slate roof with copper valleys. About 10 years ago, the valleys were painted with aluminum tar paint, because they're full of holes. So that aluminum tar paint has been up there in those valleys and in parts of the gutters for about 10 years. It was a temporary repair. The masonry around the building is cracked. In the winter, when the water gets under the sidewalks, they pick up, and then in the summer, they settle back down, so you end up with jagged parts. It's not handicap accessible. It has a decent septic system that was put in, but it's been dormant for a little while. I'm hoping that it's still going to be in usable shape. But the building needs, I'm going to say, to be restored to anything that could be used by, like the historical, to be handicap accessible. We're talking about $300,000, easy. And without them coming forward and showing me that they could take that building over and give it what it needs. And I'm upset, because we had an historic building in the north that the town that we used, it was a school, and then it became our community center, and it fell apart, and there was no interest to even put a roof on the building for 20-some years. Both ends, the A wings where the bathrooms were leaked for over a decade. And I don't want to see this building become that. And we're not that far off. When you have a roof that's put together with roofing tar in the valleys, and, you know, it could already be leaking. And a small leak can cause a lot of damage over time. It, you know, it's... I'd like to see what they've proposed. I'd like to see the Fort Barton, say, museum, and, you know, try to bring that aspect of history back, where people could take tours, bring a little tourism into town. Maybe they'd end up, you know, down by the Stone Bridge at the restaurant and things, helping the businesses in town, as happens with seeing the communities around us, where Middletown just had their celebration, their Founder's Day, and had a pretty good crowd out there at the park over on Paradise. So that type of stuff would work in town. But if they could make it work, if I thought that the historical society could come forward and put the money into that building and take it over and take the burden off of the taxpayers in town, I'd be all for it. And I would probably, you know, be willing to hold off and try to get it through the next FTR where they could take it over. There would have to be a strong effort to show me they could come up with the kind of money it needs to restore that building. So what we're left with is, we could have somebody who'd be interested in buying that. In fact, there were people who were interested in buying it for over a year or so, not sure if they still are. But they wanted to turn it into a single-family home, which is, fits in that neighborhood, and to restore it like it is, you know, keep it... I don't know. I feel torn on it, because I feel like a lot of people, I'd like to see that building standing in town, but I don't want to see it fall apart like the community center. And we, the town, I mean, you know, we got a roof leaking on this building, we struggled this year to get money in the budget to get the roof on this building, and the fire station, and the public works garage, and the rest of the stuff that needs to be done in this town. So there's only so much the town can do within its budget. So it's great to have these noble goals, but you've got to have the cash to back it up, and that's where we lack in this town. Thank you.
Madam President, if I can just briefly address that. There's a certain irony in the fact that I actually support the view of the previous speakers. And unfortunately, in a way, I have to disagree with Mr. Souza. The fact is, and we discussed this, we must have discussed this over a period of a year and a year and a half, that we were going to be filing a sepree action in the Superior Court, I believe. That, the decision, with all due respect to Mrs. Anderson, and while I support the proposal, I would have supported the proposal she's making, that court decision trumps any interpretation that we would want to make of the will. That sepree action left to the town the right to proceed as it sees fit as the owner of that property. That's problem number one. Problem number two, and this is something, I not only opposed the vote on this, the recent vote on this, but I actually took the position, some of you will recall, that the vote to instruct the town council to sell a piece of property, in fact, was illegal under the charter. I was trumped by Mr. DeSesto, who's our town solicitor. So I sympathize completely with the position of the earlier speakers, but the FTR passed a resolution that specifically says that during the fiscal year 2017, the town council is hereby authorized and instructed to sell the building. I don't know how we can get around that. Mr. Souza has suggested that one way is, well, we do nothing for the fiscal year 2017. That really defeats the, you know, why do we have votes, then? That really would be totally inappropriate, Joe, that would be my view. We at least have an obligation, I would think, since it does require fair market value, I would think that we would have the obligation to request an appraisal of the value, then see what we can do, then what's the next step after that. It may well be, as Joe suggests, that we're not able to sell it despite our best efforts in fiscal year 2017, and then we can revisit the issue that I would support, and that is the town keeping that building for some appropriate use.
And that would have to be another vote, wouldn't it, Tony? Like, we would have to try to attempt to sell this building, right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
We have to.
Yes.
Because of the vote.
Yes.
Whether we agree with it or not.
That's correct, yes.
Because this vote was there. Yeah, so we'd have to get an appraisal and go from there.
I guess I need... Jane has more clarification than I do. So the sepree action said that, what? Recap this so I understand.
Can you file a sepree?
I actually didn't file a sepree action, I didn't think it was necessary. What I did do was file a declaratory judgment action, and the court ruled in the town's favor and said that the town has a good and marketable record title to this property, that it can be conveyed out. And the contingent beneficiaries were defendants in the case on it, they decided that they did not want to pursue the case.
Well, most of them don't exist anymore.
Oh, they do exist.
Well, they're...
They actually do. So that's the situation. There's not a title bar to conveying the property. The town right now has good record marketable title, and there's a court judgment that hasn't been appealed. So that's where it stands.
Who would have standing to appeal any heirs which none exist, except how that goes?
There were contingent beneficiaries in the will.
Right, but... None of... So none of Lydia Essex's heirs would have, you know, the ability to enforce the will, or?
No.
No, okay.
No, they didn't have standing because they weren't named.
Okay, well, they don't exist, so...
There are actually relatives still alive.
Really?
Yes.
I thought this is a totally contrary to what we heard like a year and a half ago, that nobody existed anymore, they couldn't find, after an exhaustive search, nobody could find anybody.
But Tony found them.
Yeah.
You found them?
Well, actually, there was contingent beneficiaries in the will.
I know that.
And those corporations still exist.
I'm not talking about those.
Okay. The way that the will was structured, it was the contingent beneficiaries that counted. If the contingent beneficiaries were no longer in existence, then you would drop down to the heirs at law. The heirs at law did not have standing.
Is there a memo on this, or?
I believe there is, I'll resend.
It was, you always put it on the referendum, I think.
That's correct, yes.
I don't recall that, but... Well, I'll keep talking while I have the microphone.
I thought you might.
Yeah. You know, this is a familiar conversation that we're having, that because the state or the court has determined that provisions of a contract we made years ago, or provisions of a legal document that were made long ago no longer need to be enforced. The first one we talked about was retiree benefits, that we had contracts with all of these retirees, but the state passed a law that said you don't have to honor those anymore. I don't think that makes it any more okay, or any less of a, just a ridiculously stupid thing to do, and disrespectful, and awful. This is another example of that. I've never been asked so frequently and with such straight faces to go back on our word, go back on the word of prior governments, go back on the word of prior town councils, than I have in the last year. And I think it's just an awful way of doing business. This isn't the first time we're talking about this, it's not the second time we're talking about it. I'm not even sure it's the third time we're talking about it. And I think it's a real problem. If this town expects its residents to volunteer, or give money, or do anything, benefit the town in the future, if we take this action to sell this property, I'd be surprised if anybody gives a nickel to the town that they don't absolutely have to. And I wouldn't expect them to. I think going back on the word of, on our word to a generous benefactor, long deceased, is some of the worst kind of disrespectful and disgusting behavior, and I'm not going to have any part of it.
But at this point, Tony, we have no choice, because it went to the voters, am I correct?
Correct.
And I agree with everything, I agree with everything you said.
I'm not a lawyer, I appreciate that the resolution passed, but when do we... What are the parameters for resolutions at Financial Town Referendums? Are there none? Do they have to pertain to financial business of the town, or they can be, hereby declare that you paint the town hall yellow?
No on the yellow.
You can't do that, but you can do this.
Yes, you can.
What is...
Because it's a disposition of town-owned property that will result in money going into the general fund.
Well, that's a little tangential. So the painting of the town hall yellow is an expenditure of cash out of the general fund potentially, or out of... I mean, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, either way, even if it is legal, I think it's just...
We asked that question before.
You could get a referendum that could say, "Paint the town hall," or "Put a new roof on the town hall." I'm just not so sure you can specify what color it should be. Not to be facetious, but to me, a resolution at the Financial Town Referendum really is a legislative act that is initiated by your voters.
Okay.
So therefore, I think this particular one was appropriate.
Madam President, please, real quick.
Let me just see if anyone else wants to say, and then I'll let you speak again. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that this is not the first building that volunteers, I mean, the old fire station, I think Alex had told me it was the volunteers. Come on, Alex, no, just kidding. But, you know, the building served its purpose. She did what she wanted to. She provided, you know, at the town, the town couldn't afford to build a library there. Now the town's pony up and put the money up for a library. We have library services. It served its purpose. My opinion, she'd be more upset to come here and see the building falling down. That's just my opinion, but, you know, it's not the first time we sold a building that somebody donated to the town, or a group donated.
somebody donated to the town, or a group donated to the town.
I don't know any other instance, but I'd be happy to hear those, but I don't think I have the...
Fire station.
Which fire, what fire station? Stone Bridge?
Right on the corner of Highland Road.
So for a dollar.
I don't know.
The old volunteer fire station, Stone Bridge.
This is a unique situation, I think, that, you know, a woman gave land and money to build a library. I'm not going to presume to know what her wish was, other than what she put down in writing, which was to provide a library to the town of Tiverton. It didn't say to provide a library to the town of Tiverton until the town decides they don't want it anymore, and then they can get rid of it. That's all.
Just have to assume.
Any other councils?
I'm not willing to take, I'm not willing to make assumptions based on nothing.
On a positive, on one positive note, what we're doing here tonight doesn't dispose of this issue completely. I think our only obligation at this point, based on the resolution, is to make a good faith effort to get an appraisal, and make a good faith effort to sell within the fiscal year 2017. If we don't, despite our best efforts, then we can revisit this whole issue again.
Any other councils?
Just one question perhaps for our solicitor. If we put it on the market, can we put conditions on the sale that it be restored?
Yes.
We can?
Yes.
Restored as, in other words...
As a historical building.
Yeah. I mean, getting it listed would be a step in the right direction.
But it's still in a residential area, so it still would be basically used as residence.
So again, we're just making an offer for a fair market value, just an appraisal. That's all we're gonna do tonight, is push this to the next step. Just an appraisal, and we have time to look at this again.
Yes.
So is it our, is our plan to commission an appraisal, and that serve as our basis for fair market value? Because we're...
I know your objections to that, Counselor, but you gotta start somewhere. And an appraisal of value is an attempt to get you to a start, to understand what it might be worth in the marketplace. I agree with you, before you even say it. It's a difficult building to appraise because it has a unique footprint and a unique travel. It also has some pretty extraordinary characteristics to it that are gonna have to be factored into that appraisal. But until you have some idea what it might be worth, you don't really know whether you can approximate fair market value. And the failure to do appraisals, you end up selling buildings for a dollar, or 25 grand, when they have a beautiful piece of property and a water view and all the rest of it. So that's why I'm recommending doing something other than rushing to auction, is at least getting appraisal, have somebody who knows something about buildings of this period tell you what it's worth.
I will just defend the non-quit school. We did have an appraisal, and it came in around $900,000, so...
Would you pay for it now?
I don't know, probably not.
Oh, let's make sure the septic works before you buy it.
I just have one quick comment, and I'll make it quick. I don't believe that this town should be in the real estate business. It's not something we should be doing, number one. And we don't do it that well, when we do do it. So, you know, I really don't know what the remedy is gonna be for this, but we don't sell real estate that well in this town. We've proven it over and over again, that we're not good at selling real estate.
I think that's what Matt is trying to improve.
He was, and that's why...
Yeah, I wanna get a broker. I mean, I did get $65,000 for Judson Street, and that was a surprise to me, frankly, that the auction generated that.
So, do we need a motion to authorize?
Yeah, I just wanna wait, I think someone in the audience wanted to speak, and just, just come to the microphone, and I'm gonna let you...
You know, I don't want this to turn into a political issue, I absolutely don't. I think it's important for the town of Tiverton to have these landmark buildings, because it is a sense of place to who we are and where we came from, and that's what this is all about, not about dollars and cents. And I would just like to quote, I'm gonna paraphrase Oscar Wilde, who said that it is important not only to know the cost of something, but its value. And this is a very valuable building to the sense of who we are as the town of Tiverton. And with all due respect to everybody who's here, I think we need to look at alternatives. We've been provided several, you know, an alternative from the Rhode Island Historical Presi, or whatever that group is. We need to look at everything, we just can't just kick this can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Just very briefly, you know, because we can comment now.
I also, I think if the voters for that referendum, if they had understood what exactly was in her will...
I know.
That she said specifically, "It shall be used for public purposes," you know, that means that she's gonna turn over to the town this land to be used for public purposes.
We did...
Think if they understood that...
We did talk about it, Susan, but it might not have gotten town-wide, of course, but we had had discussions.
It should have happened.
Thank you.
Just real, just real quick, because I think that the Tiverton Historical Society may be being treated unfairly. This gentleman on the end, unfortunately, I'm not sure, I don't know him, but I've never seen him at the Tiverton Historical Society. I'm not sure if he's been inside the Chase Corey House, seeing the level of restoration that was done on there. It is listed as the best 1770s farmhouse in Rhode Island, one of the best examples of restoration. He doesn't see our financial books, he doesn't know our capabilities. The town of Tiverton voted on this, but they didn't know there was a group that potentially could utilize this. We're looking at this because people are telling us, saying, "We find the Essex Library important to us." I remember going there as a little girl, little boy, going there, it was a beautiful stone facade. People are telling us they're interested. I know that you had a ballot, but maybe, I don't know if a revote can be done, but if people had an option, and to understand that there's an option, there's potentially an option. We haven't seen the inside of the building. It could very well be that we can't afford to restore that building, but it sure as heck could be that we could. And the Tiverton to own that building, and to Mr. Pelletier's benefit, I applaud him for stating, "We have a moral obligation to meet people." We, as a Tiverton Historical Society, are trying to bring people into this town, get them interested in the history, the joint heritage that we have here, and if we're gonna tell them, "Thanks for donating something to us, but we're gonna give it away 60, 70, 80 years later, it's a bad precedent, and we, as an historical society, are gonna go out of business, because people are gonna say, 'Why preserve history if the town doesn't care about it on its own?'" History is something that once you lose it, you cannot get it back. There's, you know, the Pardon Gray preserved that Hathaway House, that Pardon Gray's House left there and went to Newport. It's a beautiful house there, it should still be in permanent, it should never left. He was a leader, and a regimental leader in the revolution, it should never left. History can't leave. My family's been here for over 350 years. History is important. We do not degrade history, and we do not degrade our past. And we just wanna let you know that we're trying to help you preserve our town. We may not be able to afford that, but we would like to at least look and say, "Hey, we would like you to do so." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just very quickly...
Wait a minute, Alex is here, 'cause you called him up, Joe.
Oh, okay. I'd like to know whether it, if this town is gonna be worth anything. We accept a building from that woman with those conditions. Now we wanna change what she wanted. When I was growing up, you shook a man's hand, that was a contract. That was it.
Thank you, Alex.
John, I'm the president of the Historical Society. If we could come up with the money, right, that would be let the town off, but what is it worth? You have to give a figure, so we know what to get.
What are people's to repair it, is that what you're saying, and bring it up too?
No, no, I'm saying, what does the town wanna get for it?
That's what we're trying to figure out now, we're gonna have an appraisal. Yeah. And anytime you wanna go look at it, just talk to the town administrator, I'm sure that Matt would... Okay. All right, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just gonna point out, one example in town is the old schoolhouse down past Grace on Main Road, where somebody bought that and fixed it up, and you drive by, it's a schoolhouse, you know what I mean? The person who would buy that building, even if it's historical, pretty much is gonna keep it as it is.
We hope.
Well, I really think they're gonna put vinyl siding and take off a slate roof to replace it with, you know, or demolish it. No, come on. Whoever would buy that building would buy it because of what it is, a beautiful, but they would put the money into it and keep it maintained, so it would stay that way, not slowly deteriorate over the next couple of decades. And I wanna say, if they can buy it, if the historical society could come up, or needs donate, I'll donate some if you wanna start a fund too. I'd love to see them buy that building and put it as a nonprofit, but it just has to come off the taxpayer responsibility, and go into like a 501(c)(3), so whatever, you know, nonprofit.
Eric Jones said we could put stipulations on the sale, and Tony said that we could do that on the sale, so... Any other questions from the council?
One more.
One more from Sally.
Yes, is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. We all know Ranger School on beautiful eight acres on the pond, when we turned it over, which was part of our thing to build the buildings, we turned them over immediately, non-quit Ranger. Brett's already mentioned about non-quit Ranger was worth eight acres on the pond, a million dollars, and then we sold it for 25, and the town got five, and the real estate agent got 20. So I think if these people are coming and wanted to preserve, it always bothered me that we were gonna sell that, because she gave it to the town. And I don't mind it not being a library, but they said public use. And the fact that that could be historic for the kids to come from school and everything, it's amazing. So I think, I hope we can work it out and still honor the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Which I think we can.
All right, so I need a motion to... Has Matt suggested to go out and get a fair market value price? Oh, well, no, an appraisal.
A professional appraisal.
A professional appraisal.
So moved. So moved. Second. Just very quickly, I think that this council taking action now and moving this forward is actually gonna be beneficial for that building. To just, you can't just leave it in limbo. Like I said, it needs to work done ASAP.
Thank you. The, I just heard that the motion was to get a fair market appraisal.
No, to get a professional...
Get a professional to give a fair market value appraisal on the property. Is that close to accurate? Okay. So I just wanted to clarify for the public that the fair market value appraisal does not include, like, stipulations that might reduce the value. In other words, to go to an appraiser and say, "We want this appraised, but it has to be used for public means," or, "There's gotta be, there's gotta be easements on it," or, "That it's a straight-up appraisal of the property without stipulations attached to future use, to, you know, changing the building," or, "That it's a straight-up appraisal like you'd appraise your home, where the new buyer has, you know, unrestricted use." I just wanna clarify if that's the, that's the type of appraisal we're talking about.
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's other steps after that. So motions were made in second. All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Counselor Perry, discussion and possible action regarding Charter Section 1215 to rewrite Code of Ordinances.
Yeah, Madam President and fellow council members, I was just looking through some of my next four items, actually, are requests for some kind of direction on where to go with this. It's way overdue. I can't remember when's the last time we had the rewrite of the town ordinances. I went through them, I meant to bring my book.
It wasn't that long ago?
Was it?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like there's a lot in it that I read that is still, they don't even pertain to the town anymore.
We haven't done zoning since Don Boleman was here, so we haven't...
The regular code of ordinances.
The regular code, we had a go-to with some departments, and whatever I had is in there. There was another, there's another portion that is on the pending side that hasn't been brought in, but that's all I have.
Well, I know every time there's a...
I think it needs a cleanup.
It needs a, absolutely, it needs a cleanup. So I think it's, it's something that we should start working on. I know we don't have much time for the rest of this council, but at least we can get it going for the next council. I think it's something that we should definitely start working on.
Do you have any suggestions?
Well, that's what I'm asking, how...
Tony?
I wasn't here for the last one, so, maybe some of you were.
I actually have a suggestion, and it's based on the wording of Section 1215. This is something that the town council needs to do, it's on a five-year cycle, but I think that's a good idea to get it going. It says that this starts at the town council, but it's under the supervision of the town solicitor. At the very least, what I'd like to do is give you a report as to what other similar-sized communities have done in their codifications, and what, if any, cost was attached to it. I think that'll give you a good guidepost as to how to proceed on matters of this nature.
Okay.
Could you have that information in two weeks? You want a little longer?
I'd actually prefer if it could be for the second meeting in September.
Is that okay, Dave?
That's good.
Yes. And I'll include a zoning component, too.
Zoning, good. Thank you.
Do I need a motion for any action?
Yes, please.
So the motion would be to have the...
To have the solicitor look at it and come back with his findings on, his suggestions on what, how to proceed.
To review the process and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
My second one is the...
Yeah, the comprehensive plan, if by some proper process to proceed.
Well, that's another one I'd like some information on also. First of all, is the comprehensive plan even completed?
It's at the state level.
It's a harder question to answer than you think. Is there a draft that is complete, that addresses all of the mandatory elements? Yes. Now, if we're using the old analogy, or the old image, of watching things be made in the sausage factory, where we are exactly is the pig is very much alive and marching towards a very large rotating blade that kinda looks like a food processor. It's not meat yet, and it's not because a great many of the elements, the view of the planning board, is that they wanted the feedback from various state agencies on where they were at this point in the draft, and how close they were to the target of actually having a final draft. What the administration did in some haste was finish those elements that were not done after the CPAC process seemed to have ground itself to a halt. So that was the transportation element, Element 11, which was prioritization of goals, and touch up on any number of those things that the planning board hadn't taken action on yet. I personally agreed with those people, more than one member of the council, who said that individual elements that were ready could have been sent earlier on an individual basis. That's my personal preference. When I've done this process before, that's the way I did it. But it was the call of the planning board, because it's their document, they're responsible for it at this point, to put it all together in a one-piece and send it as one-piece, which does allow you to do one step of analysis that you cannot do when you send up individual elements, and that is the internal integrity of the document. There would be people paying attention to the fact that it either does or does not contradict itself internally. That's what you can get from this entire process. But once it comes back, it's gonna come back sometime in October, is my understanding, to the planning board, it's still their document, and they will discuss those edits that have been suggested. Oftentimes, our friends suggest, but it's more than a suggestion, if it's coming from Rhode Island Housing and some of the other agencies, they really are kinda telling you what you need to do in order to get through the final step of the process and be acceptable to them. All of those cards will be on the table, and when they come, when that draft comes back, then it can be published to the town council for a joint meeting, I would presume, with the planning board to go over the substance of the comments.
Yes, under Section 45-22.2-8, Matt's correct, by the way, but preliminarily, this, the construction of the comprehensive plan lies solely with the planning board. And once they're done, they're required to have a public hearing before passing it to the town council, and the town council needs to have a public hearing also before it's enacted. enacted. One thing that the planning board did do under the section that I quoted, subsection B, they are allowed to have the state and the state agencies make a review of the plan prior to them having the public hearing. And I think they did that on the basis that once the town council has their public hearing and approves the comprehensive plan, for purposes of land development decisions in the town, the comprehensive plan that's been approved by the town council is binding. However, it's not fully approved until the state signs off on it. So the feeling was, rather than having it go up and perhaps come back down again before they even had their public hearing, it gets the comments from the state, and that would make the process post-council that much more faster and have the state approve it fully. I think that's what they did there. Once it comes back from the state with the comments, the planning board will have a public hearing, I think Matt's accurate on the timetable, and then it will be forwarded along to the town council for another public hearing at the council level, assuming the town council approves it, either with modifications or not, then it will be forwarded along to the state.
Okay. Now, well, you just quoted with state law 4215, whatever, because I couldn't find anything in our charter that has anything to do with the comprehensive plan.
That's, that's correct. What, what happens is if you take a look at the planning board section, which we'll take up next.
Right.
It says that the planning board essentially operates in accordance with state law.
State law, correct.
The section that I cited to you and I can send it to you is 45-22.2-8. That's preparation, adoption, and amendments of comprehensive plans.
I looked at it, Tony, and I'd have to be an attorney like you to understand that whole, it's not just a little section, it's, it's quite a lot section.
Not a lot of attorneys understand it either.
Okay.
Still, would you like to say something?
So my, my question was, is this something new that we did, the last time we've done a comprehensive plan, and I wasn't here for it, and I don't know if any of you people were here for the last comprehensive plan.
Actually, if I may, this is not something that, you know, and I've gone through comprehensive plan reviews for other clients over the years, this is the first time that I've seen this happen, but actually, I have to say, I think it makes some sense, because the most frustrating thing can be, your town council approves it, it goes up to the state, it takes however much time the state takes, and they send it down and say, "We don't like it, you got to make these changes, you got to go through the process again." So actually, I have to say, it was a new one for me, but I thought it was a good idea.
Because it's a new one for me.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that the town administrator and the town solicitor have done an excellent job in, in explaining the process and, and how it's unfolded. Just two quick points. When I spoke to statewide planning some months ago, they did urge the, the planning board to go ahead and send them the draft, and they said it will, the process will be quicker and smoother if we do that, so we did make that modification. The other point I'd like to make is that we would like to do something we did the last time, which is when this comes back in late September or early October from statewide planning with their recommendations, the planning board is prepared to take those recommendations, merge them into this draft, and then have an informal workshop between the planning board and the Tiverton Town Council, as, as we did some years ago, to just talk these issues out and to see where you'd like to go, and then the planning board will incorporate some of your ideas into, into our draft, have our public hearing at the planning board level, and then when it comes up to you, it'll be something you like. So that will smooth out the process and take the politics out of it. That's all I wanted to say.
Madam President, please. I gotta, I gotta think that the process kind of broke down because we're saying that we took these elements, we sent them upstate to have them, but in actuality, the council are the people who were elected, and it should be the council that votes to send them upstate. How do I know that I agree with what was sent upstate? And I was the one that was elected to, to look over this stuff, as were the rest of the council members, yeah. Planning board is appointed by the council. I'm, five months ago, I received an update that said that the land use portion of it wasn't completed yet. Now I'm assuming it's been sent upstate. I never got to read it, nothing ever came to me as a council person saying it was completed. How do I know I agree with it? I didn't agree with a lot of stuff I read in the preliminaries. It was talk, every other word was, "We're a small community, we're a small community, we're a small community, small town aspect," and even in the industrial areas, you're going to, industrial areas that are going to be small-town looking. I mean, I read through that stuff, and there was a lot that I disagreed in the last comprehensive plan that it was put in like that. I never got to look what was sent upstate, and that's what I'm objecting to. I feel like it's being pushed out of the council's eyes for, I don't know. I, I don't know, I'm not going to be, you know, conspiracy theorist, but I just, I wanted to read the damn thing before it went upstate.
But it didn't go upstate.
Yes, it did.
Well, it did, that's what I'm saying, for the final, the state knows it's not a final draft. They're just giving us suggestions to come back.
That's correct, yes.
I'd like to finish, because what are we going to hear when it comes back? Well, this is what the state approved, and if you want to change it, it's going to have to go back up again. I'm just saying that we're the accountable body, we should have voted before that stuff went upstate. That's just my opinion.
It's going to go back upstate.
Yeah, it's going to have to go back up anyway.
Well, it sounds like it's going to go back upstate twice. It's going to go back upstate once they get it again and do whatever revisions they're going to do. No?
No. We change it.
What, what happens is, is after the comments are received from the state.
Right.
And the planning board has their public hearing.
Correct.
Then it'll come to the town council. The town council has a public hearing and makes their vote, then it goes to the state for the final approval.
Okay.
But we can change it when it comes to.
That's correct, yes.
So what you're getting, Councilor Souza, is identification of anything that's truly a fatal flaw. They'll identify something that they simply would never approve when you send it up as a council. Let me give you an example. When I wrote the economic development element for the city of One Socket, I identified economic development as the number-one priority of the city administration. I had absolute support. That was what we were doing as a team, as a council, as a community, we're going for economic development first and foremost, distress. They kicked it back, saying, "You cannot identify any one element of this plan that would supersede any of the others. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to demonstrate balance." And they simply wouldn't accept it until we changed that phraseology. But it saved us some time, knowing ahead of time that they would never go for that. So we were able to recraft our language, make sure we had balance and internal references that were mutually supportive, and when it got back up there, it went right through.
But just to your point, Matt, they'll never know what our plan is, because they're not going to hear it until the final. We not might have agreed with what they sent up.
I see what you're talking about.
So what we did is you eliminated one process.
You eliminated the town council.
No, that's why you have a council.
No, I think, I think that what Dave is saying was, maybe we should have just seen it to, to.
Should have had counsel.
To do what, though? We couldn't do anything with it.
The land use particularly, the land use is the most important thing.
Guys, first of all, I know everybody's chomping at, but there are elements of this that I don't like either, but remember, it's not my document, it's the planning board's document.
Yes.
They have worked on it. They have done all of their research, they had the hearings, they did the drafting, they did a lot of review and edits. So it represents their best effort, but before they bring it to you, they ought to be efficient in their use of your time by at least making sure they haven't made any huge blunders in the process that they weren't aware of when they were doing all that drafting. So if they bring it to you at that early stage, and you actually like the way it's written, and you send it up there, then it's going to come back to you with those fatal flaws, and you're going to have to start all over again. I mean, it's kind of, but it's moot.
If we change it, there's a public hearing, send it up, and we put those provisions, and it's going to come back, too. The difference is that, the difference is that we appoint the planning board as a council. We're the elected officials who were put here.
They're the advisory.
Right? To make these decisions for the future of the town. We should have had a part in that. I, you know, I'm not trying to sound like I'm a dictator, but they, the planning board actually, right in the charter, works for the council, okay? So it's.
They're the advisory.
It's, I mean, I'm not trying to act like a dictator, but I just feel like there were parts of that I knew I wasn't going to like, and I wanted to have some discussion on it before we sent it upstate, particularly as I keep saying, that land use portion that I feel is so important.
We will have that conversation.
Yes, we will.
And we'll have to send it back upstate if we change stuff.
Which makes the argument moot.
We would have sent it where our changes were ready. Our changes would have been in there.
Or recommendations.
Or recommendations, yes, not changes. I just think it was a flawed process.
All right, so whose decision was it to do it that way? I'm just curious. The planning board?
Yes, planning board's decision. They supersede the town council.
But, no, they didn't supersede the town council.
They set it up without sending it to us.
But they didn't send it up as this is our final draft. They sent it up to have.
It was never going to go as a final draft, not yet.
Right.
It never goes as a final draft.
Then what is the point of this argument? I do not understand.
We send it as a final draft.
So when it comes back to us, that we make our changes, it goes to them again? Not the planning board?
No, upstate, yes. We'll get the final say on it at the end, yes.
And then it may come back with some.
Brett, you're right. We'll get the final say.
I don't understand, I, the way I look at it is either we did it, we did it, we put the cart before the horse, send it up with our final approval, and then they kick it back potentially, or we wait for them to give any fatal flaw, to quote Matt's, feedback, and we do it, we save some time and we save some energy and we save some conversation and do it that way. I mean, I, I'm not offended that.
I'm not offended either, but I just, the process is, and I think was right.
Okay.
And we should put something in the charter, and we're doing a rewrite of the charter on, on changing, when we do a rewrite, because there's nothing in there at all. Agree?
So there's no action that's going to be taken?
No, there's no action, but actually, it's, the charter can't supersede state law. When we get to your next one, I actually have a case on that, so.
Oh, good.
Well, I've, I've got to admit that I've, you know, been busy, I haven't really pursued getting a copy, but I would like to at least receive in my inbox or on, on new online system, you know, a copy of the land use that I've been, I asked for five months ago.
TMZ has a final, the copy that went up.
You know, the draft.
I just received it within the last two weeks or so, just before I went on vacation, but I do have a copy, and if the council likes, I mean, they should get a courtesy, the way we did it the last time, we should just get a courtesy copy, but it's already out of the state by the time.
I realize that, but it.
But I can make a copy for you.
It just, it takes me like months to read through this stuff and really understand it. It's so, there's so much there, it takes me like a month or two sometimes, you know, reading a little each night, so that when we get to those public hearings, I know what I'm talking about. I got to be able to study this stuff in my free time, so I know, because this is probably the most important thing this council is going to do, if we're all still here in November when it finally.
Everybody forgets, I'm not running for reelection.
We haven't forgot. We haven't forgot, Brett.
Joe forgets. Joe forgets. I make sure handwriting is legible, so the machine picks it up.
Tony, just one more question for you. But we could put in policies and procedures on how it flows, correct?
No.
You can't even do that?
No.
So the planning board has full authority.
I'll actually get to that in the next one.
Wow.
I'm going to get to the next session, because I think a lot of questions will be answered that way. Councilor Perry, Charter. No, that's not where.
Oh, my, my next one is the planning board duties and responsibilities.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, you know, I've been to some plan, and I don't want to sound negative or, but I've been to some planning board meetings lately, quite a few, actually, and it seems as though, I really don't know what their policies and procedures are or how they ought to proceed. They seem to be talking about things that they shouldn't be talking about, and, you know, how, how can we stop this?
Legal council is.
Legal council is there, and he tells them to stop and they continue.
Well, actually, I just want to start off with the nature of the planning board and where they derive their authority and how they, basically under what legal authority they do what they do. And I'd like to start off by saying, you know, Section 1001 of your, your charter basically says that the planning board's duties and responsibilities are provided for in state law. That's correct.
Yes.
And additional duties and responsibilities can be prescribed by the town council, but not in conflict with state law.
Right, and that's the 4215.
Yeah.
That has everything in it under the sun.
Well, basically, your zoning board and your planning board, they're, they operate on the same thing, and there has to be some, the state policy is, is that there's uniformity in what planning and zoning boards do throughout the state. Now, some communities have tried to change things. In particular, the town of East Greenwich, the case is Monroe versus East Greenwich. What they attempted to do in, in that town was they actually got rid of their planning board and said the town council will act as the planning board. And that went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said that the planning board is a statutory body, and how it's structured, what it does, is set forth in state law, and local charter ordinances cannot be in derogation of the state law. So basically, what you have with the planning board is, you know, a body that you appoint, but their duties are set forth in the state law and anything else that's assigned to them, and that can happen, and in fact, it's, it's happened in other communities and even here. But it starts off with what I just said. When it comes to the drafting of the comprehensive plan, preliminarily, that's what the planning board does, and then after they have their public hearing and it's sent out to the town council, then it becomes your document, and you all take a look at that, and you have your public hearing, whatever you vote on, you vote on, and then you send it to the state which has to approve it. That's by state law, because the comprehensive plan is a state law document, although it operates really in the nature of an ordinance. Okay? So that's what the planning board does there. Under Section 452351, the planning board adopts its own regulations and rules governing not only what it does, but also land development and subdivision projects within the town. So the town of Tiverton has subdivision regulations. That is a document that is drafted and actually approved by the planning board under that statute. Under 45227, the planning board, one of the things it's supposed to do, actually, is make studies and prepare plans or reports for the needs and resources of the community. Many communities ask their planning boards to actually come up with a proposed capital improvement program and also a capital development budget. Not here, because you have a, a budget committee, but that's something that some, some other planning boards do. And the other thing that they have the authority over is all land development projects. That's under 452355. Local administration of the local regulations is under the direction of the administrative officer who reports to the planning board. So one thing that the planning board does is, the administrative, administrative officer actually reports to them. So that's basically what they do, unless they're assigned some other duties, it all derives from state law.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and I, and I do have a question, and I'd like to get really more of an explanation or get some material from you so that I have a clear understanding as to what's involved. And this is what I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical at all, I just wanted understanding of what their responsibility is. For example, I'm reading in the comments section of the Fall River Herald News.
There's your first problem.
And this is from a, I've, I've received a, a number of phone calls, as we all do, after some controversy, and I was told the planning board is discussing the casino, and at this point, we're hearing arguments against a casino. There was actually more to it than that. I mean, to give you an example, there's a letter here where it indicates from one, one of those speaking out, representing the interfaith clergy group, "I ask the Tiverton Planning Board to begin working on a social. Board to begin working on a social plan." And he goes on to describe this social plan for Tiverton residents who become addicted to gambling, to include psychiatric treatment, legal resources for criminal activity, aid with bankruptcy proceedings, utility shut-offs, emergency financial resources, blah, blah, blah. And he goes on to suggest that he in fact anticipates getting a response from the planning board. That is that one extreme, okay? And I really didn't have an answer. I assume, under our state constitution, and under the statutes that are setting up the casino, that at this point, it isn't the responsibility of the planning board, one, to decide whether or not we have a casino, but it certainly isn't the plan of, I can't believe it, the responsibilities of the planning board would include setting up social programs for gambling addiction. On the other hand, and it may sound like an exaggeration, but this is the God's honest truth, the very first time I attended a planning board session, when I walked in, the initial discussion was, and this is the opposite extreme, the discussion was what the board preferred. Was it azaleas or rhododendrons? And I said, "Oh, God's name, why are they discussing this? Why don't you just leave it up to the homeowner, what they want, or what the business wants?" But it may well be that they do have that responsibility. I don't know that answer. I'd like to get as much material as possible, and get as much direction from you as possible, so the next time I go to a planning board meeting, I won't be sitting there thinking, "Is this really what a planning board does? Or is this their responsibility? Or is it the responsibility outlined in a comment to the Herald News? I just don't know."
Yeah, that one would actually take less time than the other one. I can get a memo off for you next meeting on that, actually.
No, I don't wanna make work for you. I'll do the work. I'm that interested in the subject. I wanna make sure that I have an understanding of what the responsibilities are of a planning board, because I'm on the town council, and I have a responsibility to know what their responsibilities are, what their duties are, what their limitations are. If you tell me where to look, I will be happy to look.
Okay.
4215, 4227.
Just very briefly, Mr. Lambert is correct. We had an item on our last agenda concerning the withdrawal by legal counsel of Twin Rivers, of their request for zoning change and a change to our comprehensive community plan. And it was on the agenda with support from our legal counsel. As a public hearing, we didn't expect anybody to show up, because actually, they were withdrawing stuff, not proposing stuff. But we got here to this room, and it was packed with people, and on the advice of legal counsel, we decided to go ahead and have about 45 or 50 minutes of public comments. People were here to make public comments, I think people deserved to make them. A gentleman got up and talked about how the planning board has to do a social plan for people who get addicted. We're not gonna do a social plan, but I can't control what somebody's gonna say, and I'd like to be polite when I run a meeting, so, you know, I thanked everybody for their comments. We heard comments on both sides. It went on for about 45 minutes. I asked legal counsel, "Can I close it down?", and he said, "Sure." So I did that. But having said that, I would just like to say, I agree with everything that Mr. DeSisto has said about the legal authority, but I think I'd like to make just a couple of really quick points. When we hear major and minor land development and subdivision proposals from developers, or a comprehensive permit, as we're doing right now with Tiverton Heights, or even a rural residential development, we're required to make findings, positive or negative findings, at each and every one of the three stages in our process. The master plan process, the preliminary process, and the final process. And those findings are prescribed by the state. So we are not being whimsical or arbitrary, and a lot of what we do is try to get the information we need to make reliable findings, to make findings that we can justify if it goes before a court of law, is something that we have really tried to get good, solid, peer-reviewed evidence.
Could we keep the conversation down in the background? It's kinda getting distracting.
I'd also like to make the point that with all of these developments, we have to observe a time clock, and that time clock, again, is prescribed by the state. It's a pretty tight time clock, and if we need more time to get the information we need to make reliable findings, we have to ask the developer, and he can deny that. So those are two things that I think that people don't fully understand. I'd also like to make the point that we set surety or a performance guarantee for all of the improvements that are done in a project, and that takes a lot of time as well. We need to do that so that we're requesting money from a developer that will cover the actual costs anticipated, not more, not less, and that's a tough balancing act. We do have design standards. They're not arbitrary design standards, where we say, "You've gotta do an azalea and not a rhododendron." They're design standards that are on paper, and that are tied both to our industrial park, believe it or not, which may not be appropriate, but that's what town council at that point in time wished to do. But design standards are also tied to the new zoning districts that are established for Main Road from Susan North to the Fall River line, and in the vicinity of Bliss Four Corners. Those design standards are not mandates, but they're something that we're trying to encourage, to create a more walkable, a more pedestrian-friendly community, a more attractive community. So we work with developers, we try to work with developers to do those things. We also have other items that we have to deal with. We have to approve environmental review statements for any new development of any significance in the two watershed overlay districts for the two reservoirs in Town Stafford Pond and We continue to update our land development and subdivision regulations, which Tony said is sort of our bible. We do that ourselves in the context of a public hearing, but they need to be updated frequently. I think in the past, we tended to not have done that as often as we should have, so that's very time-consuming. And we have to do it to be consistent with state law, and also to be consistent with the identified needs of the community. And finally, we need to move ahead with changes in zoning. Again, these are recommendations to town council, to recommend to town council changes in zoning that are consistent with our comprehensive community plan. So as soon as statewide planning does approve a comprehensive community plan, then we'll have a lot of burden on us to actually make sure that the existing zoning regulations conform to that comprehensive community plan. So we do a lot, that's why we have two, frequently, in the past year, or year and a half, I'm guessing, most months, we've had two meetings, not just one meeting. So we've got a lot on our plate, and we appreciate the support we've been given by town council, and we especially support the, especially appreciate the support we get from our town solicitor.
Thank you, Stu.
Madam President, if I can just make one, add to my list of requests. I'd like to have something both now for the planning board, so I have a clear understanding of what their responsibilities are, what their parameters are. But I'd also like that for the zoning board of review. And I'll leave it up to you to decide whether it's easier for you to put it together, or just tell me what the sites are, and I'll put it together, and be happy to share it with other members of the town council. But I just don't wanna go to any more of these meetings, and really not have an understanding of what their responsibilities are, and I don't wanna get phone calls anymore, asking me, "Are they, can they do that?", and have no idea, you know, off-the-cuff viewpoint. I'd like to have something in front of me, so I have a clear understanding of what's going on.
Probably easier for me to do it, I'll get that done.
Okay.
Can I just follow up a couple of questions? Stu, do you mind coming back? I just had a couple of quick questions. You said you're not going to do, the planning board's not going to do a social impact, what did it, Jay, what was it called?
It's a social-
He called, well, in the letter, and I don't know how he called it at the meeting, but he called today, he says, "I have asked the Tiverton Planning Board to begin working on a social plan." And then he goes and outlines the social plan. He goes on to say, "As an advisory body to the town council, the planning board would have an obligation and a duty to plan for eventuality, especially in the placement of a casino."
Of course not, of course not.
And so my reaction is-
And Michael Burke got up right after that, and said, "It is not the responsibility of the planning board to do any such thing." So Michael set the record-
I mean, I like Mike, but I wouldn't count him as the authority on what is or isn't.
Yeah, actually, that's not something for the planning board to do, but there is state law provisions on those very issues that are required in connection with obtaining a casino license, but that's not the responsibility of the planning board to do. There is, I know there's a constant issues between the casino licensees and those people that are most interested in those. There's supposed to be a certain amount of money set aside for those types of programs. That's always an issue.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that, and just, I may have asked this a number of times in the past, does a planning board have an internal governing document, or a set of procedures?
Yes, yes. It's called our land development and subdivision regulations.
But I mean, yeah, okay.
This is our bible, this is what we live by, and zoning, and the town charter, and state law.
Anything else?
Excuse me, Brett, the answer to your question is, is their internal document is the, just what was cited, land development subdivision regulations. It does conform to state law, but basically, what it does is it not only sets out what applicants need to do, and what the procedure is to file applications and also get them approved, but there are also design standards in there for road building and things of that nature. So not only is it a guide for the planning board, but it's also a guide for applicants before the planning board, too.
Is that document easily accessible online?
It's accessible through the service that the town uses, which I believe is called MuniCode.
Yes.
So if you go to MuniCode, you will get the most recent version of our land development and subdivision regulations, as well as the most recent version of zoning.
But it's all lumped in one unpleasant and-
I have it, would you like me to send it to you?
It's appendix B.
No, I'll follow up with Nancy. For the last X amount of years, I've been trying to get separate documents available, easily discernible, so you don't have, you know how big our code of ordinance it is? To have to search through that to find the section you want, and then it doesn't print properly, I'm just, this is something that, anyway, okay, I'll follow through.
One comment. Madam President, I want to begin. I just wanna say one thing on the comprehensive plan, that I do support the planning board's decision to send the document to statewide planning for a draft review. That was the process that basically statewide planning is requesting planning boards do, that they send it up even piecemeal, so that they get it to review before it goes through to hearing, public hearing processes, and wastes money. So they, basically, I believe they did the right decision in moving the document to the state to get it reviewed before it came to the town council. Thank you. Thank you, Stu.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stu. Anyone else?
I'll agree with the statement that Joan Shabbat just made as well, that they did the right thing.
Okay, so at this point, we need a motion to direct the solicitor to come back with planning board duties and responsibilities.
And zoning.
And zoning. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion?
Follow motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, could we move G8 up next? These people have been waiting for a while.
Make that a form of a motion? Does anyone want a second?
Can I second it?
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor. Town administrator requests authorization, oh, yeah, to share cost of paving finish coat aboard a lane. Go ahead.
Madam President, if I could, I'd like the residents to describe the work that they have already done.
Residents aren't even looking at me, come on.
As they make their way up.
They're our police officers, come on. They're not following direction now.
Move you up, stay in that way.
But before they get into the details of the work they've done, I just, I wanna remind everyone, and ask the solicitor to fire up his memory banks. We've had conversations about private roads that have been pre-existing, or public ways. They're historically recognized as public ways. They were accepted by the town prior to zoning, and prior to the subdivision regulations. So they're public ways of record, and the town council has the discretion to extend services of any kind on a case-by-case basis, based upon the evidence that's in front of you, and the needs of the community. So I have no hesitation saying, we should participate with these residents in finishing off this road, because they have done a tremendous amount of work to make the road passable to this point, and what we're all really doing is spending about $65,000, $7,000,000 to finish a project that's necessary for the road to be passed. $6,500 or $7,000. Sorry.
Madam President, if I may, I actually researched the history of this road, and you may recall that I previously given an opinion on a different street in town. It all comes down to when the town was accepted, and when the town was accepted, and what the regulations were at the time that it was accepted. And based on the town's ordinances that were in effect at the time, this street falls into that category, so that the town can provide services to the street without it changing the very nature of it. If that makes any sense.
Did you mean to say, "It's not required that the road be built to town standards at this point in history"?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Question, please, Madam President?
Yeah, go ahead.
For the solicitor, for the administrator, I'm sorry. Is this gonna bring the road into the code as it was at the time it was originally? I think it's gonna be better than that. So we're actually gonna exceed the limit of standard at that time? Right, so, and if my recollection is correct, the town council, this sitting council has already approved extending snow plowing services-
Right.
And garbage down the street.
Garbage, too, right.
So what we'd be doing is finishing the work and making better use of all of our own- I haven't been down it, so describe exactly what we're gonna be doing, if you would. Is there a song about a long and winding road?
The road was initially a gravel roadway. It would have water runoff, drainage problems, everything that would go into effect with that. We've essentially paid someone, I'm sorry, we've actually paid someone to come in, the same person who grades roads for the town, we hired him, he came in, he graded the road for us, he widened the road for us, we put two spillways in for drainage and runoff, and we spent $20,000 in paving alone, not counting the grading fee, just for paving, so we could have the road paved, and we were able to put the base coat down.
So the binder's down?
The binder is down, yeah. And we met the standards of the binding, we went by the former DPW director's standards, so we put the proper thickness down.
I just wanted it to be clear, because I'm gonna vote in favor of doing this, but when we were all going through the road, I'm sorry, what was the name of the committee that, Street Committee? When we're going through that, we told a lot of the people that were complaining about their roads, that there's-
their roads, that there's a path that you have to follow in order to be an accepted road, and they've done that, as, you know, as that road, apparently, I guess everybody came together and pooled the money, so it was a community, a little community effort there to bring their road up to standard, so this is not a freebie from the town for any special reason. This is because these people put their, you know, effort together and brought the road up to make it safe also for the guys going down there with the fire trucks that have to go down there in ambulance, so our plow guys can get down there without hitting boulders on the side of the road and things like that. So, it was an effort made, this is not, I just want to emphasize that, this is not a, you know, just a gift to this particular road. This was because they made an effort, and the town asked them to make that effort, and now we're following through with our end of it.
Okay, but just to correct the record, this is not going to be an accepted road afterwards.
No.
Well, Madam President...
It'll still be a private road.
Yeah, it's going to be a private road.
No.
I don't think it was, in my personal opinion, I don't think it was ever a private road. That was just my understanding from the get-go, but however...
Let me correct myself, it's not a private road, but it's not accepted, it's kind of in a...
Oh, I understand, yes.
You see what I'm trying to say?
It's not meeting the standards of a private road.
That's correct, yes.
No, absolutely not, I, we understand.
Yeah, if I can add, Madam President.
Go ahead.
The reason this town council has, at least in my view, has not taken over these unaccepted roads is the fact that we simply don't have the money. I think it's an absolute disgrace and an embarrassment to this town, that town people themselves have to fix their roads. That's absolutely ridiculous. We shouldn't have these unaccepted roads if people want to turn the roads back over to the town and the towns maintain them. That's why if we, and I'll repeat it again, if I ever have an opportunity, and the opportunity may come with the casino vote, to establish a reserve fund for streets, believe me, I will do it, and that will be one of my first objectives if I make the next town council. And I am obviously going to support paying you every penny that you've spent on getting that street up to some acceptable shape.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I can, I'll say one thing, I have no problem supporting this, but Jay, you were on the street committee denying all these roads at one time.
No, no, you missed the point, you're really, I want to make this point, what, my vote with the street committee was, we're deceiving these people, we're telling these people that we're going to accept these streets, but we're not going to repair them. It was just a joke on the taxpayers. That's why I objected to it, Peter. What I want to do is make sure that if we accept these streets, we as a town are going to maintain these streets for the taxpayers, that's why they're paying taxes.
Madam President, I move that we authorize to share the cost of paving the finish coat on Bolduc Way.
Second.
Just three questions. Cost is going to be sixty-five, the budget's going to be roughly sixty-five hundred to seven thousand dollars is what we estimate.
So, I'm told that's our share.
Well, that was, last year, we had a construction company that came in, did all the paving, so we were basing that roughly off last year's quote. I don't know where the cost of paving or asphalt has gone since then, it's not what I do.
But, but, that's rough.
I would probably say, can I ballpark and not pigeonhole myself, but I would probably say somewhere about seven thousand dollars.
Okay, and do we have an estimated timeline, Jim?
Tomorrow.
Would you add it to the list, correct? Would you add it to this year's paving list?
No, they're going to pay.
We have money in your paving budget, it's going to, I want a requisition of funds tomorrow.
Well, we have, we have some money to turn out to the town, but we don't have enough to take over, so we were going to turn our money over to you, and then hopefully, is that how it works?
We'll take your money, yeah?
Yeah.
And we'll put you at the list.
Anything else? I have motion on the floor, and second, all those in favor? You're all sat.
Thank you, can I just add one thing, just, I want to make sure it's not a mistake, but it's Bolduc's Lane, not Bolduc's Way.
Oh, yeah.
This way, there's no problem.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
They want to pave the wrong road. How are you doing?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to six now, Councilor Perry, Charter 1205, discussion and process for election of Charter Review Commission. I know the clerk has some ideas, do you want her to speak on that?
Again, this is just for discussion, I think we should get this ball rolling again to get this started, at least, and I did speak to the town clerk, and I think we could probably have this election tied in with the budget referendum, correct?
Yes.
That might be possible, so it'll save us some money.
If I may?
Sure.
Go ahead, Tony.
That's a good idea, and in fact, if you take a look at the language in the state constitution, it supports that type of an election at the financial town referendum, if that's something that you wanted to do, it would be authorized under the state constitution.
Good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just what's the structure, and I know we have to elect so many people, fit into certain buckets, right?
Right, we're just starting to look at this, Brett, so, I'm more concerned with getting the idea, the process of adding the special election with the FTR, and then we'll work back with what our election regulations are as to when people will have to put in nomination papers if they want to be elected and whatnot. So, when we work on it a little more, we will get a better schedule of the timing issues.
So, it's the same process as an election, you get fifty signatures, you get put on a ballot, and how many people are on, was it nine?
I don't know how far back you have to go to allow that time, so we're just getting to look at it, I haven't...
Yeah, but I'd like to keep this fresh in our mind.
Keep it rolling right after the primary.
Right, thank you.
Excuse me, we are, we're working on, I'm actually working with Nancy on that, that one of the things that I had, that I was concerned about was whether or not this had to be at a regular election, and it appears to me after research that that's not the case. You could have it as, you know, as been discussed tonight, so we'll work out the details on it and give you a report on that.
Four weeks?
Second week in September.
Second week in September?
I won't be at the first...
It's after the primary, huh?
Yeah, I know, I won't be at the first meeting because of the primaries, so...
There you go, so the second week. Thank you.
Just another question for the town solicitor, it is possible to have this election with only one poll open, rather than all the polls?
Yes.
We have five polls, so it will be combined as well. Okay, so that would be, so that would save us money?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we covered that base as well?
Yes.
Very good.
I'll be at the high school, so we'll be able to accommodate townwide.
Yep, very good. Any other questions on this topic? And the follow-up on this in four weeks.
We don't...
Second, second meeting in September.
Do you need a motion for that? Viviana.
Okay.
No.
All right, next item, item seven, town administrator requests permission for demolition of seaside gas station contingent on grant approvals from CRMC and septic plan. Town administrator?
Madam President, everything that follows, that dash, has nothing to do with what I'm looking for. So, what I'm requesting from the town council is actually authorization to proceed with demolition, if, if and when the town receives the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Development Grant, and if the town council takes a vote to accept that grant. The reason why I'm trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve is, I think some folks think, are you going to do a demolition, so you're just going to back a piece of equipment up to a building and just knock it down, and that's, that's the task, that's the project. But we have an awful lot of things we have to do leading up to that. We disconnect power, we go through the building, we have the environmental engineer review everything, and then we, we have to be very specific about dig safe and what exactly is the nature of the project. So, I want all of those, I'd like your authorization, so I can have all those ducks in the row, so that if and when you have the opportunity to take a vote to accept a grant, that the very next day, we could get work started, rather than delay it for months. Now, the thought process here is, we would hopefully hear back from RITM either at the end of this month or during the fall, and we could probably pull this off within a week or two, so that we would not interfere with either the operation of Grinnell's Beach or the Stone Bridge abutment construction project when those issues become relevant beginning next year, next calendar year. So, the whole idea is to get ahead of the curve. Now, there's a couple of things we, we felt like we needed to do, just because we needed to answer questions that we had on our, on our own. Hoffman, Mr. Hoffman Engineering, who's done so much work for the town in the Bay Street area and is fantastically detailed, very familiar with seaside gas because he was involved in the removal of the tanks and the filing of the environmental land use restrictions there. He went through the whole building, identified all the asbestos, and got an asbestos abatement plan approved by the Department of Health and the EPA, so that piece is done, and he has filed for an assent with the CRMC, again, that will not have any bearing on anything unless and until the council accepts a grant to go forward. But if all of those permitting processes are done, we'll be in a better position. So, really, at this point, I would be looking for your authorization so I can line up the resources I need to actually do the project as soon as possible.
Any questions?
I had a question. You mentioned asbestos, are we talking just tile, or are we, is there?
There was very little in the tile, believe it or not, and this, I wish Mr. Hoffman were here, because he's very animated and colorful about this. There was a one-in-a-million chance that you'd actually have some asbestos in the caulking along the roofline, and Tiverton's luck, you're one-in-a-million, there was just a little bit along that edge where the manside roof seals up against the cinder block.
Used like Bakara, I guess, really?
Oh, my. But it does, the abatement plan was very simple, you just keep the thing wet and segregate the asbestos components.
Any other questions from the council?
The only thing I will ask is, in the event that we do not either get the grant or we don't accept it and it's less, less than we need to do the project, you know, the building still eventually needs to come down, is that, so we'll have a contingency plan in that regard?
So, if the grant is not successful, I would come back to the council and look for your, a second authorization. I just, I want to expedite things if things go well for the town, if things don't go well for the town on the grant application, I think we need to, we'll have to take restock of the situation and go from there.
Any other questions?
Just, I mean, you're talking a day to knock that building down, except, like you said, the asbestos, if it's sandwiched in it, it complicates it a little bit, but even if we don't get the grant, I mean, the plan is still to take the building down, isn't it?
That would be my recommendation, absolutely.
Who pays for it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it really is starting to deteriorate, I mean, we're talking about other buildings deteriorating, I'm watching, the shingles are blowing off, but I also noticed that the back is kind of unsecured and stuff now, where the wind is rotting out and stuff, so, and we got, still got those septic holes there, so, the septic system and stuff, we've had it. I think time is becoming a...
Any other questions? Like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to grant permission to advertise an award bid for purchase of, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, but if you want to do that one, I'll do it.
I didn't know where you were going.
Yeah.
Permission for demolition?
Permission to demolition.
Of seaside gas contingent on grant.
Yes.
I'll second.
I was just one ahead of myself.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, now, we're going to do the next one, Mr. Perry just made the motion for. Town administrator requests permission to advertise an award bid for the purchase, one more time, of a cable-type catch basin cleaner per FY 2017, capital P.
And Madam President, I know why Councilor Perry got ahead of himself on this, because this has got to be the most exciting topic on this agenda. A cable-type catch basin cleaner. Your packet has everything in it, there really is only one manufacturer that makes this thing, but we're going to go out to bid and allow for an equivalent if somebody bids it out, but this was in the budget, we discussed it ad nauseam, we have eighteen hundred catch basins around town, it's time to catch up.
Has the other one finally broken, are we still using it?
As you know, many things in the DPW bond are a matter of opinion, the strongest-held opinion is that we have sandblasted out the interior of our vacuum catch basin cleaner, it's no longer functional. We've probably squeezed two or three more months of use out of it, but it's, it's dead.
Terrible, the design anyways, terrible.
It's not a very good idea to put a tornado in a can and not expect the can to break.
No, this is definitely a better system.
Any further questions or discussion?
Say, when you take out the breakdown time for the other one, this one will probably actually accomplish the mission, so it's...
I think members of the council are aware, we're cannibalizing some of our existing equipment and building our own close-to-custom piece of equipment here, so...
I like your idea, and I know it's not, I'm going to say it anyway.
Go ahead.
I spoke to Matt about equipment down at the DPW, and it looks like we have a lot of equipment that's outside, so, you know, I'm not into buying these new snow plow trucks and keeping them outside, and came up with a good idea about checking with other local towns, I mean, you've got some rich, rich towns out there like Barrington and, you know, throughout the state, and they might want to sell their equipment to us when they get rid of it, and their equipment's not bad when they get rid of it, Lakin might be another one, where they swap equipment more often than we do. And when you look at these snow plow trucks, I mean, you're only using them three months out of the year, you know, to go out and buy brand-new equipment for that kind of stuff is just, I don't think it's worthwhile.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion, would you like to make it now?
I'll make that. Permission to advertise an award bid for purchase of one catch-type, cable-type catch basin cleaner.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? unanimous. Town administrator announcements?
Very quickly, Madam President, on your agenda this evening, on the consent agenda, item A eight, just want to direct everyone's attention to that, that was really there to get permission to sign this letter and send it on behalf of the town, and I just want, for the record, to make a couple of things very clear, what this letter says. Paragraph four, sentence two, "The more important concern is that VHB, which is our design engineer, be required to complete all of the deliverables promised in their fixed-price contract to the satisfaction of the town. Change orders at this late date are not appropriate. Ten years into the project, we believe VHB must be held accountable under its design contract for all work product guaranteed under its terms and for which consideration has been paid." The next paragraph and the last sentence I'll read, "Further, at this time, the subcommittee will not recommend acceptance of any project contract amendment giving project control of the Stone Bridge abutment over to RITD. So, I think the position of the subcommittee is clear, the chairman is here, I'm sure he'll have something to say, but I think we captured the outcome of several meetings now, and making that position clear to RITD with this letter."
Any questions?
So, do you think we need to call a meeting for this, or is this something that we can...
I think this is fine, yeah. So, my only other announcement is, I've said during the budget process that I wanted to get the capital improvement plan process back up and running. I've gotten spreadsheets back from DPW and from the police department, I know that Fire is working on it and is nearly completed, so we will be having fairly lengthy conversations beginning in September, and I don't know how we're going to schedule this, so what's the most appropriate way for it to get started, but we're going to go through the capital improvement needs of the town, both our buildings and our equipment, in a very thorough and scientific way, so that when we get to the capital budget, that piece will be done by December, when the town administrator starts to work on the expenditure budget. So, I'm, I think we'll be very well documented as we go through the process, and learning an awful lot as I read all the things that have been submitted and as I interact with the guys at DPW, so I think it's a good process.
Just one comment, Madam President, has a new ambulance arrived?
Yes.
New ambulance is here, oh, chief, where are you when I need you? Because I... Because I, it's like watching a dealer in Las Vegas move cards around. But I think we have two ambulances in service right now, right?
That's correct. We have two that are broken down right now. I was forced, the new truck had come, the radios are not here from it yet. I was forced to put the truck in service, called the health department, they came out and did a very quick inspection on it, it passed. We're operating with portables, which is creating some communication problems, but the truck is up and running in the north end. We moved the north end truck to the south end to try to cover down there, that truck broke down. The truck that was originally down there, that's broken down. Paul's been away for a week, so he's not been able to look at it. So out of four rescues, we currently have, and I'm sure everybody's big comments in the papers about it, but Masha did a very good job on her article on it, we've been forced to put a ten- or eleven-year-old rescue truck back in service in the south end. So we're running with two with no backup. Find out tomorrow what happens with it.
I never did hear what happened to the ambulance that broke down on the highway with a patient in it. What exactly happened?
We don't know. Paul hasn't been here to look at it. It just stopped running. He was driving to Rhode Island Hospital with a critical patient and shut off driving down the road.
All right, so it just cut off?
Yep. That's not the first time it's done it. They did it in July also.
It seems like we've had electrical problems with our ambulances before, is why we've been discussing who we're buying them from.
We buy the same.
Mr. Sosa, it's not really a matter of who we buy them from. The Hortons have been an extremely reliable truck to us. The problem is we're pushing them far beyond their expectancy.
Guys, open meetings. It started with an announcement, now it's talking about something else. Okay. Not that we shouldn't, but it should be posted.
I'm done, Madam President.
Thank you. Council announcements?
I have.
No, go ahead.
You sure?
I got you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure the council's aware that the Tividen Town Administrator Contract, paragraph nineteen, contains the following provision. The extension of the employee's employment shall be considered by the employer in the last six months of the employee's employment contract, not later than one hundred twenty days prior to the end of the employee's employment contract. Employer shall notify the employee in writing whether the employee elects to offer a employee a new employment contract. The employer shall notify the employee in writing whether the employer elects to offer the employee a new employment contract. Failure to notify the employee shall result in an extension of the contract for a period of one hundred twenty days. So the current contract expires on February twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. That means the consideration of the extension shall begin on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, six months before it ends. It's appropriate to bring this up at tonight's meeting. We would have a deadline for the decision of extending the contract is October twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, one hundred twenty days prior to the end of the contract. If that deadline is missed, the town council elects later not to extend the contract, then the administrator gets an additional one hundred twenty days under the contract.
So Tony, does this mean we evaluate, we do an evaluation?
Well, I think the process starts tomorrow.
Okay.
We just have to notify, right, in writing?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I think the fact that it's brought up at the meeting tonight is sufficient, but probably the best thing is to just send out a letter to Matt so he knows that you're going to be doing.
And then we start the.
Review process?
Evaluation process.
Yes.
It's because it's coming up, it's because it's a renewal.
It's a one-year contract.
What?
It's a one-year contract.
Yeah, but we did a yearly evaluation, now this is.
This is.
This is for the contract renewal.
This is a contract renewal.
Correct, yes.
It's in all of your contracts.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter.
Do you want to go, Dave? Madam President, I just, for, not just for the council but for the public, I just, we talk a lot about trying to save money, and, you know, when you save the pennies, they add up. And I just wanted to point out that we're using these tablets now, we're trying to become a paperless council. Slowly, we'll be hopefully saving money on copy leases and printing ink and, I guess, manpower, woman power in this case. So, so I, you know, I just, I bring this up because I get a lot of letters, you know, what are you guys doing to try to reduce the budget? And this is just one of the little things we're doing to try to get costs down in town.
Just to dovetail on that, you don't have to print my packet anymore.
We all have them, by the way. We're all just trying to get orientated to it. And I left mine at home, so.
No, I think I've got it. The other thing I was going to say, I actually made it through the whole meeting, so, without having to go to my paperwork, so it's. And the clerk base work, the one you showed me.
All right, anything else?
I have two comments, Madam President. One is, I was in the treasurer, the town clerk's office actually one day last week, and a young lady came in asking, who is our oldest resident in town? And it wasn't you, Nancy, so. You don't get the cane. The cane has been passed back to us, I guess the gentleman has passed away, and.
Both canes are back.
What we've seen, I think we have three that we can identify that are at least one hundred years old. Two are at Brookdale, and one is at home. But this is just for anyone out there in TV land, if you know anyone who's a hundred years old or in the audience, if you know, actually, I think your mother's one of them, right? Mrs. Pelletier, your mother's one of them.
She passed.
Is your mother, your mother passed?
My mother passed.
Passed. Yeah, okay. So if anyone out there knows of anyone a hundred years old or older, please let Nancy know so we can get that cane back out to whoever it belongs to.
Anyone else?
And I have, I just have one more. I'd just like to go back to last week just for a couple of minutes on that vote that was taken on Legacy. You know, we took that vote and what we did is we stopped communication with Legacy. Now, if you don't want me to talk about this, Tony, you can stop me.
Is it, is it going to lead to asking for an append item?
No, 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 no. It's going to lead to, if we took the same road here with the Long Project, which we kind of did, and Matt, you kind of informed me on something that happened probably three years ago, if, well, not with this council, but with another town council president, who said, if that guy comes in here again, throw his butt out of here, we don't want to talk to him no more. And good thing we didn't stop talking to him, because now we've got a beautiful complex going in up at the industrial park. So I think, again, just shutting off Legacy was a big disappointment to me, and I think it was the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to join in with Dave on that one. And that is, you may recall that on that vote, I simply abstained. I believe Dave abstained as well.
Excuse me?
And it's not because we were.
Jay, I think we've gone beyond.
These are not, this is going beyond announcements.
Oh, yeah, well, the announcement I'm making is, I really believe that our protocol, if you will, should be to listen to anybody, keep a conversation going as long as you can. And to that extent, I join with Dave Perry. Again, I'll drink to that.
Any, does anyone else have an announcement? Town council? No. Town clerk, do you have anything?
No, other than to say that tomorrow evening at seven o'clock, we'll have a board of campus meeting, and that will be for the lottery of placement on the ballot for candidates.
That's the primary, yeah?
Madam President?
No, no, it's not for the primary, Joe, it's for the general election.
General election?
Joan, Madam President, one more. Is there a walk-through at Legacy's? Did you request a walk-through, Joan?
At Long Plugs.
Yeah. Is it this Saturday?
I've determined that three counselors, which is not a quorum at this point, would like to go around.
Only three can go?
No, no.
Oh.
But right now, only three have said they want to. So it makes my life easier. So I've got an email into Jim that he did not respond to today to ask him what time, but he's wide open, so I'm already.
If it's more than three, then it has to be posted under the open meeting tag.
Right, so it cannot be done on Saturday then?
Well, I'm.
Oh, yes, okay.
By Wednesday.
I'm out on Saturday, I'm traveling tomorrow through Sunday, so.
I can't do it anytime after ten, I cannot do it, ten, ten-thirty. So I may not be there, but if it's earlier.
If you were going, I would be four, Dave. Let me ask you a question.
That's fine, we can post it, that's easy enough.
We'll just post that we're going to have it, that's all.
But it sounds like it'll be early in the morning, eight-thirty, nine o'clock.
Is this Saturday coming?
Yes.
And we can all go. We can all go, we've done this.
Yeah, we can post it, we'll follow the open meetings act, we have plenty of time to do that.
I'll be there.
It's just a cycle?
Yeah, more of a drive than a while, he's a gator.
A drive?
A gator.
Pretty rough.
Four-by-fours or something?
Yeah.
He's one of the Ugs.
All right, I'm going to go on. Nancy, do you have anything? No. Anything further? Okay. Jay, you want to bring us into closed exec?
I move we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-five, Ray Acquisition of Real Property.
Second.
Motion being second, Councilman Sosa?
Aye.
Council Perry? Hello?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.